If you may all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can please remain standing. Doug Harden, our police chaplain is going to give us our invocation this evening.
If you would, join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, God, with great understanding of who you are and what your desires are for us, God. Father, you haven't left us in the dark concerning your heart toward man and your desire to lead us and guide us, Father. You desire us to come, Lord, humbly, knowing our limitations and, Father, even all the more, understanding that you have none. So, Lord, we come before you this evening asking for your wisdom, Father, that we would be able to attack the challenges that face us, Lord, in our communities, Father, many of them far too great for us, Father, the answer is far beyond what we're able to come up with. Father, we come asking for your wisdom and your power, Lord, and your grace and your love to be seen in all that we say and do here tonight. So be with those, Father, who will be speaking. Father, give them courage, God, and truth in their words, and, Father, we'll know that you will hear and that, Lord, you'll answer from heaven. And as we pray this evening, God, we want to lift up those lives that have been so affected, Lord, by this shooting this weekend, Lord, in Vegas. May you bring comfort and healing, God, peace, Lord, to those lives that are affected. And, God, that you might, Father, bring, Father, a silver lining out of this whole tragedy, God. That, Father, the opportunities for us to love one another and come together, Lord, would outweigh any other divisiveness or hate that would come. So we give you this time in our lives, Lord, and be with us tonight, we pray. It's in your name we ask, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like a call on Chief Valentine to give us an introduction about our new homeless coordinator, please, chief, if you could step forward.
Go ahead. Good evening, mayor and city council members, city manager, city attorney, and those present. I'd like to, if you can come on up. I'd like to introduce Officer Cassandra Hawkins to everyone here present and everyone at home. What we've done here recently, a couple of weeks ago, is dedicated a full-time police officer to our heart program, and so what she does is really an outreach service to the homeless here in our community, and it's not just a civic center, it's citywide, for anyone who's looking for resources to direct them, to support maybe some short-term housing, and of course, the ultimate would be long-term permanent housing. And so Cassandra Hawkins was recently selected. She has experience doing this work product. Many in the community already know her, and so in spite of our challenges with staffing, it was important to dedicate this resource, and so I just wanted an opportunity to introduce her to all of you. Cassandra Hawkins.
Thank you. I know you've got a big job ahead of you. I've never seen, you know, as much impact on the city as it relates to homelessness as we have now. So, you know, with compassion, but also enforcement, you know, whatever you need, code enforcement, city attorney's office, all the city resources so that we can get this under control, it's imperative because there's all sorts of nonsense going on out there that we really, you know, will not tolerate, and you know you've got our support and the community's support as well. Good luck to you, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now I want to call on Janelle McLaughlin, the chair of the ETAC Committee, and she's going to talk to us about trees and the need to take better care of our trees. Please, go ahead, Janelle.
May I invite my fellow ETAC members up with me?
Yes.
May I invite anybody that's interested in trees up with me?
Sure, whoever you want. I'll go stand right behind you, Janelle. And, Janelle, look, I know there's other people that want to speak on this. We'll let them speak under general comment. Right now, you're chair, this is your program.
I understand that.
You go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Janelle McLaughlin. I've been a resident of Santa Ana for 25 years. I am the chair of the Environmental Transportation Commission, and that is known as ETAC. Interesting enough is that I've loved trees ever since I came to Santa Ana, and I feel that our trees are extension of our yards. People that drive through our city perhaps might never come into our homes, but they see our yards, and our yard as a city are our trees. This is my second year as chair of ETAC. I've always volunteered in my community. I really think, I believe in the fellow residents that have volunteered, and we hold a bond, a belief, and a passion that our citizens committees are important, our commissions are important, our neighborhood associations are important. I see three, I know three of our council members came up through commissions, Michelle, I think Vince. We're volunteers because we know and we believe we're helping. Let me tell you, ETAC is at 7:00 AM in the morning. You've got to believe you're helping to get up that early. I'm a fan of these city commissions. I believe the system works. We live in Santa Ana and know our community, and many of our directors and city employees nowadays live outside of Santa Ana. So I really need the wisdom tonight to choose the right words to explain the frustrating journey. In November 2014, I was appointed by the Chamber of Commerce or asked to serve on ETAC. The Chamber of Commerce has all of Santa Ana versus ETAC members that have specific wards appointed by specific city council people. I arrived as a member having, the members having a very strained relationship with the executive director of Public Works. What happened in April 2014, Governor Brown's water restriction, and then in 2015, the City of Santa Ana's council adopted a mandatory outdoor water restriction. The City of Santa Ana just turned off the water. It turned off the water in the medians, and it encouraged homeowners to turn off the water. And I know it's not that simple, but it's pretty much that simple. ETAC formed a subcommittee for trees. What we did is we researched what other cities did. They had the same mandates. We reached out to tree cities USA such as Claremont, such as Brea. And what we learned is like in Brea, they turned around and turned off all of their grass in their median sprinklers, and they affixed a $15 little hose around their mature trees for deep root watering. If we did that back for our 2,200 trees, that would be a cost of about $33,000 hard cost, but we didn't. ETAC members attended all-day seminars. We talked to Claremont volunteers, Claremont Public Works, Brea Public Works. We did our homework. We came back and we said to our commission, this is what other cities are doing. And at the time, we had a commissioner that is an arborist and worked for the city of Anaheim. So we had a good knowledge of what we spoke. Now, you have to understand that for four years, we haven't planted any new trees. We average about 300 to 400 trees planting, but if we can't water a new tree, therefore, why are we planting them? So we have about 1,200 trees that are backlog, that have vacant spaces. So we went to Public Works and said, we see you have $50,000 in here for new planting each year. Why don't we stage that money and use it for converting certain medians at certain times because we understand the budget constraints? Instead, a water truck was pulled out and made the solution for the 2,200 trees. ETAC asked the cost of this water truck. Well, on a report given to us, ETAC, on May 12th, a report from the executive director to ETAC, it stated, "Mature median tree injections, two-week cycles to do all trees, two-man crew, $10,000 a week for two-week cycles." Then ETAC went back and said, what is the cost, an overall cost? Well, Public Works came back on September 6th with an A, B, and C plan. They explained the annual cost of Plan A was $360,000 to contract a water truck. Plan B was $210,000 if the staff did it. Plan C was a one-time cost of $275,000. Now, Santa Ana has close to 49,000 trees at a cost of $161 million, and that's our investment, and that's quoted from West Coast Arborists. The facts, we had GPS inventories, which is great. When I was working in my neighborhood, I did a hand inventory because I was so concerned. We have 62% of our trees are in good condition. We have a concern here. Tonight, I'm asking city council to help with a battle plan to save our trees and save water. The past cannot be the picture of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on Mayor Protem, I just want to ask what the pleasure of the council might be because I'd like to figure out how to save all these trees.
I would like to give some direction.
You know, maybe agendize an item to give direction, or may you give direction right now? Are we able to do that?
I would like to give direction now, but I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
I would like to thank Janelle and ETAC for bringing this issue up. Certainly, I believe that the trees, that the investments that we've actually made over the years in our trees, 49,000, we definitely need to keep those up. State law tells us that we are not supposed to use potable water for the turf. It didn't mean that we didn't, not for the trees.
Correct.
And so what I would ask this council now, that even though we send a letter or we get fined by the state, that we take a motion here today and direct our staff to move forward and make the investments to water all our trees, not the turf, but the trees. To do this immediately because of the investments that we actually already have. And I do agree with you, Ms. Janelle, that, you know, when you look at our living rooms here in the city, it is the trees that make this city really beautiful, and it took me actually about eight years to finally believe our mayor, who was such a big proponent of trees, as we were looking at conserving water, and I was like, wow, you know, how do we balance this out? But ultimately, when you have so many pedestrians, we have so many people walking, whether I live in Wilshire Square, you live certainly in Floral Park, we see the big canopies of trees and the welcoming, really, I truly believe, when you go into one of those neighborhoods, it is extremely welcoming. It really creates place making, but more importantly, I truly believe that we have made investments for decades here in this community. We can't just allow our trees to die because the state, you know, we're not really reading the mandate correctly.
That's correct, absolutely.
And so we need to move forward that.
We spent four years saying that.
Mr. Mayor, so I would just direct us to move in that direction, and, you know...
Well, let me just ask our city manager, city attorney, what, I want to vote right now as well and just say, you know, $210,000, fine the money, let's save the trees.
I'm sorry, we would not be able to take any action which includes money, but what you can do under the Brown Act is you can give your city manager direction to come back with an item prepared as a staff report to let you take action.
All right. Let's make a motion. Jose Solario.
You know, I mean, we've discussed this a few times and, you know, consistent with what everybody's saying. I even have talked to the chair of the state water board, and what I found is you can actually seek a waiver just to water the medians because really, they're just watering the trees. I mean, the grass is dead, but it would be nice to let the state know what we're doing, that we have plans for the future, and staff just needs to write that letter, send it, and turn on the sprinklers, and that's probably just something that could be done administratively, but we do need to do a formal communication to the state as well. We don't want to be, you know...
That letter has been sent. Why don't we put everything together that we are doing and bring that back in two weeks?
You know, or just maybe just staff can do it. I don't know why it needs to come back.
The letter has gone. We've appealed to the state boards, but we need to catch you up on what we're doing.
Councilman V. Avi, this, and then Vince.
I would echo what Councilman Solito mentioned, and I do thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and ETAC for your work. We have talked about this, this matter, we've talked about it here as well previously. Appreciate you bringing it once again back up with the letter and the updates. Madam City Manager, what I would ask is a hard date on when we will start if we haven't yet commenced by the time you report back, watering the trees, particularly in the medians and just in general throughout the city, but we should be at a place where we can go ahead and just turn the water on and save our trees.
May I say two things?
Go ahead.
I was told last week that the water truck, by Public Works employee, that the water truck gives 10% of the water that that tree needs, and that's frightening because of the costs that we've been doing over the past couple of years. The additional thing is that we need to tell our neighbors and our friends how to water a tree. We're not asking them to turn their water system and spray it on, but also teaching them how to deep root water, and we can do that in our water bills, you can do that on a little Channel 3, you can do that every time somebody from Public Works goes out to a neighborhood association. But there is a very detailed plan asking for outreach that doesn't really cost money. West Coast Arborists has every kind of hang tag there is, give them to the neighborhoods, they'll hand them out. We care.
Thank you, Janelle. Councilman V. Sarmiento, please.
Well, for purposes of brevity and just so the city manager and staff understand, I'm completely supportive of what Mayor Protem has mentioned, and I want to thank Janelle for coming before us and bringing this back to our attention and everybody else on ETAC, and thank you a lot. I know you and I've had this conversation before as well.
Thank you. So do we need a vote on this, or is the direction clear enough?
It's not on the agenda. We should not vote.
So no vote?
No vote, just direction to staff is what can be pointed out.
Well, let me just, before you leave, Janelle, I remember when we didn't used to have ETAC, and I think it's one of the best committees that I helped form and put together because now look at the great work that you're doing. You're not only in touch with other folks around the city that care about this, but you're able to bring issues like this to our attention. So I know this is the second year that you're chairing it.
It hasn't been easy.
And it's tough. It's tough because, you know, we're, everything, every dollar is in competition with every other dollar in our budget, but I think you mentioned a number of $161 million or so, which would be the value of if we didn't have all those trees, and I would tell you, maybe it's even bigger than that because if you take trees outside of a neighborhood, all the value of all those homes in that neighborhood are going to drop. So it's not just the replacement value of the tree and what they might be worth, but it's what they do to our environment, to our community, to our health as a city, and especially in such a dense city with so many people, you know, trees and that vertical growth, you know, it's life in our midst. So, you know, there's not enough we can do. I wish we start planting again because eventually, trees are going to start to die just because they get old, and so, go ahead, Janelle, I know I just struck the chord there with you.
Over my period of 15 years working with Public Works, we did get grants. I've walked door-to-door and had signatures done. We got grants for our trees down Flower Street. We got grants on our Bonnie Bray and Benton, there are grants to be had, and I know we've been a bit understaffed, but I would really ask to look for the grants that we can start replanting again.
And can I ask you and staff to follow up on one thing? Contact the Irvine Ranch Water District. They have a whole nursery program through the Dire Well Field, well number nine, there's a lot of water that goes right now under contract from Santa Ana to Irvine, and it's supposed to be somewhat reciprocal. What I'm telling you is I think we can get a lot of trees for free if we just ask the Irvine Ranch Water District, so let's follow up.
I'd be happy to water the trees that we have.
No, no, it's under contract. It's under contract, but it's not just that we sell them water. It's water is a very precious commodity, and they're very glad to have that agreement with us. We should ask for them to take that into account and try to come and benefit our community with a lot of trees. So please, you know, contact them.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I really want to thank the interim city manager because I visited with her and asked, how do we talk to the city council? Because we're supposed to be a direct report, and we have no vehicle over four years to even have your ear.
Well, you did a pretty good job today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, Councilmember Viejas and myself are going to present a proclamation to the Orange County Fire Authority.
Thank you very much. Mayor, council, audience members, Randy Black with the Orange County Fire Authority. I was asked to give a brief little overview of the National Disaster Preparedness Month in the month of September. It's National Disaster Preparedness Month, and I think we had quite a month and a half run, starting on August 25th, when Hurricane Harvey blew into Texas, and Irma followed that, and the earthquake in Mexico City, and the disaster that we're watching unfold in Puerto Rico. I think it's important for us to take advantage of the reminder that we have in front of us to make a plan. Disasters don't plan, but you can. That's our little campaign. Disasters don't plan, but you can. So make a plan for yourself and for your family. Have yourself a disaster kit. You need a kit at home, in your car, and at your workplace. Make sure you have an out-of-state contact that can coordinate all of the members of your family because sometimes you may not be able to get ahold of each other, but you can get ahold of somebody outside the disaster area. And Orange County Fire Authority on our website, ocfa.org, has lots of resources, PowerPoint presentations on disaster preparedness. Please take advantage of that, ocfa.org, as well as we have a public educator available. So if you have a neighborhood association that wants to have a presentation on disaster preparedness, please reach out and contact us through the website, Division 6, that's a little tough to remember, but Division 6 is the City of Santa Ana. We'd be more than happy to coordinate setting that up. We have two of those coming up here in the next month or so already. And remember, 10/19, October 19th, at 10:19 in the morning is every year the great shakeout. So if you want to take advantage of participating in that at your workplace or your schools or anything like that, that's a great reminder also. Earthquakes are probably our biggest risk here unless you live up in the canyons, and we just got that reminder here recently as well, didn't we? So thank you very much for the opportunity to give you some reminders, and please take care of yourself and your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Black. And so I'm Councilmember Juan Viegas. I'm the representative for the OCFA here for the City of Santa Ana on the board over at OCFA, and I have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and I will read this. Whereas home fire escape plans provide skills said to know how to quickly and effectively escape the home under situation where there's fire. Let me see, I should have brought my glasses with me. What to do in case of a fire situation, therefore, we declare this week, October 8th through the 14th, as Fire Prevention Week. Want to present this to you, chief, on behalf of the city council, and thank you very much. You're welcome. I also want to remind the public that we have a smoke detector event this coming Saturday at 8:00 AM at 4,300 Westminster Street at the Second Baptist Church. Our goal is to provide 1200 smoke alarms to residents. They're all free. They'll install them for you if you know anyone in that area, or if you want to come out and help, we appreciate it. We're going to have a lot of volunteers. It's a good thing. We try to do this twice a year, chief, twice a year in different areas. This area was chosen because we had a fire and a fatality there. Guess what? They didn't have smoke alarms that worked. So please keep that in mind. Make sure you test your smoke alarms every couple of months. Thank you, chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to be moving with the next presentations. The next presentations are myself, and then I will call on Councilman Viegas after the second one, and then Councilman Sarmiento to follow. If I could have Frank Irrie, please join me. Well, good evening. I am going to be doing two proclamations. The first proclamation I'm going to be doing on National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and we have someone very special that we're presenting this to who has been, you know, his entire career, been working in the field, and for those who don't know, Frank Irrie used to be a former council member in Mission Viejo, but certainly has a lot of experience in what we're going to be discussing in cybersecurity. But how, you know, I think over the several months we've been hearing, many of us know, raise your hands about your credit scores and those agencies that monitor those credit scores, right? They have just been hacked and some of our information, and so for this reason, actually, this month is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and so cyber criminals have become quite savvy in their attempts to lure people into, get you to click a link or open an attachment. But I'm not going to go over all the different data breaches and all the compromises that we have, not only within city government, but even in our own personal lives, because I'm not an expert, I'm not a practitioner in this, but I'm definitely very passionate about open data and big data and that the work that I'm doing from a regional level at SCAG, and that's where I sit with Frank on an open data, big data committee, and we're discussing what can we do for the entire Southern California region as we're talking about cities moving into open data and big data, but more importantly, how do we secure that information? Since we've seen over the years a lot of breaches, not only in the private sector, but also in the public sector, and so that becomes very important. So I'm going to let Frank talk about, one, his career, but more importantly, the work that he's been doing with UCI and cities across Orange County, and one example is when he was in the city of Mission Viejo, he did some amazing work. So Frank, please share with us some thoughts.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Martinez. I've got to tell you, it's something a little bit funny that the presentation on cybersecurity follows the National Disaster Preparedness Week, so I think they both kind of, I think they both work together depending on whether or not you get hit. I'd like to thank the City of Santa Ana and Mayor Protem Martinez for recognizing that this is National Cybersecurity Preparedness and Awareness Month, and there's a lot of challenges that everybody has, and one of the biggest ones, and this is a big issue for you, your council, your entire staff, is the fact that nationwide, there's a shortage of about 300,000 cybersecurity professionals. So when you talk about the City of Santa Ana, you talk about the staff that they have here, these are the agencies and the entities that are basically in competition with a very short labor market in the area of cybersecurity. It's a big problem. It is not going away tomorrow, and it's something we all need to be aware of because as much as you take care of your own privacy and private information, guess what? The cities, the local agencies, the water districts, the trash districts, they all have the data too, so they all have to be very much on top of things. And what, as Mayor Protem mentioned, one of the things that's been going on recently is UC Irvine has just started a cybersecurity policy and research institute, and they're working on several different things that are going to help Orange County. One of the things that they're working on is they're working on trying to alleviate the shortage of the number of cybersecurity professionals. So they're working with the law school and with the engineering school to bring curriculum not only into the university, but also to help drive some of that into the local high schools, to get kids excited about, you know, instead of just playing their games, actually going out and knocking down the bad guys so we can make things better. And it's working and doing that stuff together that's going to help us alleviate a lot of the problems because the blunt reality is for every day that goes forward, the bad guys go ahead for. That's just the way it is, and it's difficult, especially for IT staffs with limited resources to keep up with that. And one of the things that we're working on now, and I think this will be of interest to everybody, is there's now a discussion going on within Orange County, and I've been talking to Michelle and others about it, about working in a JPA-type fashion to share the burden. So instead of having one agency cover all the costs of standing up some cybersecurity capability, having a city, two or three cities, working some water districts, some school districts grouping together, and in the same way you have a life insurance policy, well, if you have one insurance policy, it's expensive, but if you have a group policy, it's less. have one insurance policy, it's expensive, but if you have a group policy, it's less. So I think that's a conversation that's going to get very mature over the next six months to a year, and it may be something, especially with the City of Santa Ana, to take a big leadership position on. So thank you once again for recognizing this is Cyber Security Month, and, you know, we'll see what the papers say next week, but I'm sure there'll be something happening pretty soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Our staff did put some amazing things together, so I do want to just read a little, just to help educate our constituents out here in Santa Ana. So we all can take steps to be safe when it comes to using the internet. Stop hackers by setting secure passwords, or if something doesn't feel right, think about the information you want to share, and how your online actions can affect your offline life. Connect over secure networks with people that you actually know, which is very important. I will tell you that at times, whether it's in our personal life or not, and now, you know, I didn't realize, I was doing some research the other day, is that, you know, people could hack into your video camera, and that you have it setting down in your home, or, you know, or in your nightstand. People could actually hack in and get your, you know, and video you, and looking at what you're doing, and not saying that it's going to happen, but, you know, the research that I was doing, it has happened quite a bit. And so I think sometimes we become so very loosely with our cell phones, and we leave them wherever we want. We're in the restroom with them, we take them to our bedroom. And so it's important for us, whether it's our iPad or our smart devices, that we kind of leave them in areas where, you know, that they're secure, and that, you know, you don't want to have them in your bedroom or in the restroom. So I would just encourage the residents, as you continue to face this reality, that we're, you know, it doesn't only happen in the United States, it's happening globally, but we also have to take responsibility. And certainly, government is overwhelmed with all the information and what we're dealing with. And as Frank mentioned, we are understaffed. And so when we look at IT, sometimes, you know, IT is not always in charge of cybersecurity. Sometimes, within our law enforcement, they may not have, you know, those professionals that are in charge of cybersecurity. And so how do we go about making sure that our systems are secure are extremely important as we move forward? So it's a great honor to provide this proclamation, recognizing National Cyber Security Awareness Month, to Frank Eri.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic. And next, if I could have Councilman Viegas join me. We're now going to be doing October. It's a very busy month, from national disaster to cybersecurity, to domestic violence awareness month as well. So I'd like to have Salvador Jimenez, the supervisor from Casa de la Familia. Please join us. And as he's coming up here, I asked my colleague, Councilman Juan Viegas, you know, because I know this is something that he's extremely passionate. And before him, actually, Councilmember Roman Reyna was somebody that was really pushing as well domestic violence. So it's really great to see that we have actually men who have an interest in domestic violence, and their passion and commitment. But more importantly, for Councilmember Viegas, I think in his career and the work that he's done beyond just being on the city council, is one that has many years of experience in supporting a lot of the causes. And so I would like for Juan to make a couple comments, before we ask Salvador to come up here and say some comments, and then before we do the wherethes. Councilman Viegas?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Martinez. Domestic violence, it has no boundaries. Doesn't matter if you're a person who's educated, or uneducated, or where you live. I've seen many, many cases where this affects families. And, you know, family is everything. Family is everything. Whether you have children, or you don't, if you're a husband, wife, or with a partner, or what have you, that's your family. And domestic violence is the second thing that's not talked about in the Latino community, because it's considered taboo. Number one is sexual abuse of minors, but number two is domestic violence. Those are things you just, in our communities, you don't speak about. It's very, very tough, because you're told you don't talk about those things. And if you think that it doesn't affect children, it does. Husband and wife go in the, for example, they go in another room, and they fight, and they argue, oh, we do that away from our children. They're not listening. Believe me, they do. And these children see that. And it's really tough, because when you have children that are put in that situation, they can't do anything about it. Where are they going? They're children. So they sit there. And many of them get traumatized. So in our community here, a while back, I mentioned that I'm working on bringing the Family Justice Center here to the City of Santa Ana, just like they have in the city of Anaheim. Very, very important that we bring that here, so we can streamline services to help those victims. Because there is such a thing, it's called, that's called battered women syndrome, or, you know, learned helplessness. Where you're just pretty much brainwashed to the point where you're told, you do what you're told, and then that's it. And you don't seek for help, or else there's going to be consequences. Very, very tough. We want to break that cycle. You want to help children in this community, you got to start at home. You can't have domestic violence in your home, or any kind of violence in your home, or abuse, and expect your children to go to school and pay attention, or be productive. It just doesn't work that way. So we really, really need to address this issue. And people ask me in my career, well, Mr. Viegas, what can I do to be a better father, or a mother, or a spouse? I always tell them, work on yourself. If you got a problem, seek help. That way, the better spouse, or the better parent can appear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Viegas. And now, let's give him a round of applause. Very passionate about this issue. And before I bring Salvador, I just want to just highlight some things, because I think this organization has done a tremendous amount here in Orange County, as it pertains to domestic violence, and why we're recognizing them today. As we all know, over the last three decades, much progress has been made to support domestic violence crime, for victims and survivors to hold abusers accountable, and to create and update legislation to further these goals. Domestic violence is the leading cause of injury of women. These effects, women, not only physically, but emotionally, and can lead to a lot of emotion, you know, for the rest of their lives. And, you know, when I see organizations throughout Orange County wanting to focus on domestic violence, I've, this is something that I have always been very supportive of, because prior to this chief here now, who I'm assuming has made this a commitment, but the calls of service that we actually receive here in the city, and we tend not to talk about, because it's always more of those major other big crimes that we discuss, but we, the calls of service here in the City of Santa Ana are fairly high when we're talking about domestic violence. And sometimes, again, as Councilman Viegas talked about, that it's a taboo within the Latino community, but it's time that we actually do whatever we can to empower, in particular, women, to make sure that they actually have a voice, and that they actually have the support. And so this organization, Casa de Familia, and I'm not going to go into all the great work that they have done, because I would like for Salvador Jimenez to highlight some of the work that they've done over the years. But they have made significant progress here in Santana and in Orange County. So Salvador, please help us and share some of your thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman. Casa de la Familia, I'm very privileged to work for them. And like the Councilman said, there's not a lot of men that actually help and participate, not that they don't want. In the Latino community, like you mentioned, it's a kind of a taboo to speak about. But, you know, we're trying to bring awareness to it. We've been in the community for about over 20 years, in Santana, Orange County, in LA as well. But here, we have our building, we have a location that people can just come in and talk about it. And go to the front office and say, you know, I need help. Can somebody come out? And we have therapists on site that will come out and help us. I'm available to answer phones for patients. And sometimes they don't want to talk to me, because I'm a man, but there's gentlemen that call and be like, you know, I need help as well. So it's a topic that sometimes is difficult to talk about, but it's something that we want to bring out to the community. We want to make sure that the community come to us and help. And we are grateful to be in the community and assist as many people as we can. We are a nonprofit corporation. We hold events, and we want to invite everybody. October 20, we're going to have, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so we're having a little event to bring awareness to it, to help us help the community as well. It's going to be in Santana. If you go to our website, casadefamilia.org, there's more information on it. The title of it, it's Fall Beauty Trends. But it's to bring awareness and raising funds to support children and families in Southern California, Orange County, Santana, who have suffered a psychological trauma as a result of domestic violence. And it's a very nice event. It's, you know, we're going to have a lot of people from the community helping us out, and reaching out to the community. So we want to invite as many people as we can to help us, so we are able to help, you know, the community as well. Yeah, we are located in Santana, 1650 Fourth Street. So we're right in the middle of Santana. We're right accessible from every location, and it's a big, beautiful building by Dr. Nogales, Nogales Psychological, Casa de la Familia right there. And like I said, everybody's, you know, welcome to come in anytime.
Great. Thank you so very much. And Juan, please join me up here. I did just want to read a couple of the statistics, because our staff did a wonderful job at really putting the key points together. But just some statistics about domestic violence, and why we're actually proclaiming October to bring awareness. Studies suggest that up to 10 million children witness some form of domestic violence annually. Nearly one in five teenage girls who have been in a relationship said their boyfriend threatened violence or self-harm, if presented with a breakup. Based on the reports from 10 countries, between 55% and 95% of women who had been physically abused by their partners had never contacted non-governmental organizations, shelters, or the police for help. And so when we talk about Casa de Familia, and wanting to make sure that he provided the location, I understand that this is sometimes a very confidential, very sensitive matter, that folks may not want to contact the police, may not want to contact elected officials, or sometimes even other organizations, because they're scared for their lives. But it's important for them to know that Casa de Familia is available to help them, and they're on, they are on Fourth Street. But more importantly, they have amazing therapists, and they have an amazing executive director, Dr. Anna Nogales, who is not here today, but the amazing work that she's done, not just here in Santa Ana, Orange County, across California, and across the nation. And so we're very fortunate to have Casa de Familia here, who has helped thousands and thousands of young girls and women here in Santana and in Orange County. And with that, Juan, if you can please join me, as we present National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and now therefore, the mayor and city council do hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage residents to help victims of domestic abuse by reporting incidents to the police, or referring them to professional organizations for help. Congratulations. Take a picture. Councilmember Sarmiento? Doing double duty here. The mayor's not here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. If I could have El Consul de México, Mario Cuevas, and his deputy consul, Marco Antonio Freire, come and join me up here on the, in the well. And if there's anybody here from Northgate Gonzales, I believe we're looking for Luis Flores and Adrian Martinez. They're both representing our good friends at Northgate. And I have the privilege and honor tonight to be surrounded by some very, very good folks that are going to help make a presentation that, for me, has been, has been one that I mentioned a while back. And boy, we've had a very, very difficult last few weeks, and months, and days. And, you know, we were talking about national preparedness, and there've been so many things, I'm losing count, of the hurricanes that came before us. They hit, you know, Houston, they hit Florida, and obviously, what's happening still in Puerto Rico. But in that whole span of natural disasters, we had two earthquakes that hit Mexico as well. And so we have so many Mexican nationals here that live in our city, that live in the Southwest, that I thought it was important that we do something symbolically to show that we understand, and we send our love and our care for so many folks that are affected out there. Because, again, we lose track of everything that's going on. I, you know, when the incident in Las Vegas hit, I just thought, what's next? Right? And so we've been almost numb and calloused to everything that's been going on. And we can't lose our humanity and our sensitivity to these difficult moments. So I'm just so glad to be with people that are doing their part to help ease people's needs and pain. And I know the folks in Mexico, you know, may have gotten lost almost, you know, in all the natural tragedies that have happened all over the world, and difficult times that everybody's faced. But we simply wanted to take this opportunity to show that Santa Ana stands in solidarity with Mexico's earthquake victims, and we continue to provide support and optimism on behalf of a community that cares deeply for that, for that country. Mexico suffered, as I said, two devastating earthquakes in September, an 8.1 magnitude that hit on September 7, and another one that measured 7.1 on the Richter scale that hit Mexico City. And that's the one, I think, that all of us saw, the very graphic videos, where we saw schoolchildren in, you know, in complexes and buildings coming down, and many people that were trapped in the rubble. And we know we're an earthquake, we're an earthquake territory here in Southern California, so we can certainly empathize. They suffered devastating damage to the states of Chiapas, Oaxaca, Guerrero, Morelos, Puebla, Ciudad de México, State of Mexico, and Tabasco. There've been many organizations that, you know, have been doing very good work across the country, and really globally, to try to help. And here in Santa Ana, I just wanted to, you know, make sure I had our friends here from the consulate, to let them know that we in Santa Ana are with them in solidarity, we're with them in unity, we're doing all we can. And I just wanted to, you know, we tried to get our logistics correct here, but I wanted to have our friends from Northgate Gonzales, who are so closely tied to our community, and have many of their stores here in Santa Ana, that they're doing a very unique thing. For every dollar that's donated for earthquake relief in Mexico, they're matching a dollar with that. So I thought that was a very, very great thing that they're doing. Let's give them a big round of applause. They've always stepped up when we've had community efforts, so I just want to thank them personally, and let them know that I have proceeds from many in the community that have donated and put together a fund that was a little shy, maybe about $1,200 or $1,300. I want to round it up personally to $1,500, and give that to you tomorrow in certified funds, so we can match that, and make that $1,500 into a $3,000 donation on behalf of our residents from Santa Ana, and give that to the Mexican consulate, to three foundations that I guess that are eligible, the Carlos Slim Foundation, the American Red Cross, and the Brigada de Rescate. So, you know, to all the residents that did their part in donating, you know, they were, you know, donations that we received that were in change, you know, and they were little kids just giving their pocket change, and their dollars, and crumpled up bills. That added up to hopefully now $3,000. It's going to give relief to many, many needy families and children in Mexico. So let me turn this over to the, to the Mexican consulate, who we're always honored to have. And we're going to be visiting with him on the 27th of October, because he's bringing a great exhibit to our city called Wings of the City. So hopefully, we'll gather on much better terms. But, you know, we have to be together in difficult moments, and in moments that we celebrate. So, Consul, si nos puede dar unas palabras, por favor?
Buenas tardes. Gracias, Councilmember Sarmiento. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to express the American people, that the Mexican people, and their hearts and prayers are with all the victims and families who are suffering because of the tragic shooting in Las Vegas. And I want to take this opportunity to express our deepest gratitude to the American people, who also, every time we have a problem in terms of these natural disasters, we receive their help. And this work comes both ways. I remember Katrina, Mexico, made his part according to the circumstances. And now, again, we have the international help and support to recover of these two big earthquakes. Actually, the second one, 19, September 19, it happened on the same day 30 years ago, the first one. And this one was also very devastating. But we have a lot of solidarity from all over the world. But we have a lot of solidarity from all over the world. 23 teams came to help, 32 another offered. And we are so proud to say that we have the American delegation for USA that are mostly coming from Southern California, with technical personnel, staff, canine, denomials, and also equipment into search and rescue. Almost, I think, I think all of them have left Mexico, but they couldn't leave with our gratitude and express our solidarity. We really thank you, thank them very much, because this is one of the best ways to show that Mexico and the US are neighbors, friends, and partners. And I want to thank also Northgate because it's a very corporate, the company, very well-known for all of us, Familia Gonzalez Reynoso. I want to express our gratitude as well, because as Mexicans, they have a very, very strong and deep commitment with the community, not only the Hispanic, the Mexican, but for all of us. And they do a great job. We want to contribute as well and really please send and convey our best regards and thank you very much on behalf of the Mexican government and the Mexican people.
Well, good afternoon. Yes, I want to give the thanks to anybody to congratulate, so thank you very much.
So I have two, just small tokens and gestures of our appreciation to Northgate Gonzalez in recognition of your generous donations to Mexico's earthquake victims. I want to give this certificate of recognition, please. We know Oscar and the brothers and all the family and they've always stood with us and always helped. Thank you for standing with us again and standing for those that are affected in Mexico. And finally, this proclamation, which, you know, stands for a lot of what we feel, which is just great unity with the country of Mexico and those that are affected. It's a proclamation recognizing solidarity with Mexican, Mexico's earthquake victims. The city of Santa Ana stands in solidarity with Mexico's earthquake victims and will continue to provide with great optimism all the help that Mexico will surmount so they can surmount this tragedy. Therefore, we proclaim this in solidarity with you. And if you will receive this on our behalf, Mr. Consul.
A todos que están escuchando en español y en la tele, de parte de todos los concejales y el alcalde aquí de la Ciudad de Santana, es una proclamación para estar en unidad de ustedes en estos momentos tan trágicos y sepan que tienen amigos y gente que están con ustedes para apoyarlos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.
So I have one more. I'm breaking my own rule. I always say, I always limit myself to one presentation per meeting, but I'll make this one brief. Dawn, do you mind coming and joining me up here? So this one's a little bit more uplifting, so let's, we'll change the tone a little bit here. Dawn Reese is the chief executive officer of The Wooden Floor, and I'm so happy to have her here. And I'm gonna give her the floor so she can speak on behalf of what they're doing out there. But this is basically a comprehensive campaign that they're going through, a campus expansion. And she's gonna be recognizing a lot of the contributions that The Wooden Floor has given to our community. But we're excited because they're opening up a satellite campus, aside from the one that they have on Main Street close to Bowers Museum, out at the depot, which is a development that we have diagonal from the train station right on Santa Ana Boulevard in Santiago. So she's gonna be able to serve, and her staff will be able to serve, a lot more students, provide a lot more services there. But just real quickly, a bio on The Wooden Floor, for those of you who don't know it. It was founded in 1983. It's one of the foremost creative youth development nonprofit organizations in the country. It transforms the lives of young people in low-income communities through the power of dance and access to higher education. 100% of the students who graduate from The Wooden Floor immediately enroll in higher education. That, to me, is a stat that's excellent, and I think that that's something that, even though it's sort of an ancillary mission to what they do, which is providing a safe space for many kids, it just encourages academic excellence. So thank you, Dawn, for doing that. And it's grown from an after-school, small ballet program into a strategic, integrated, and holistic creative youth development model. And I believe it was featured in the, in Stanford Social Innovation Review magazine in the summer of 2017. You know, I just can't say enough about it. I want to go ahead and give the floor to Dawn because she's been such an ardent advocate for, for her kids there, her faculty there, and all the admin staff there. We're really blessed to have them in Santa Ana. We're really blessed that they continue to do the good work that they do. And I just want to thank Dawn and have her explain to us how their, how their growth is coming along. So Dawn, the floor is yours. Let's give Dawn a big round of applause.
Thank you Vincent. I want to thank the council members, Mayor Palito, Councilmember Sarmiento. You know, The Wooden Floor is homegrown in Santa Ana. We started in 1983 in the basement of the church, started with 40 students as St. Joseph Ballet in the Episcopal Church of the Messiah. And then we grew to about 150 students in the Fourth Street on the Fiesta Marketplace. And then in 1999, we opened up our campus, which is on Main Place, off Main Street by Bowers Museum. And now we have a 21,000 square foot, three-studio facility. And then that gave us an opportunity to serve 375 students with year-round dance education programming that we combine with academic tutoring and college and career readiness. And that also inspired us to start to think to ourselves, how do we want to make a difference in Santa Ana and our surrounding communities? And since that time, we've served over 95,000 young people in Santa Ana and also 14 other cities that they travel all the way into Santa Ana in order to have their lives changed through the arts. You know, arts is a powerful medium for many children, to help really inspire them, to heal them, to challenge them, to look at a life of full potential. And you can hear from Councilmember Sarmiento, so many of our children struggle for many things that they want to have for a better life. And I feel personally that we provide an opportunity for every child to get their hand on that first rung of that success ladder. And The Wooden Floor in their life really helps them propel forward. And today, we have over 400 students that line up for only 70 spots to join the organization. So this year, we're opening up our second location, as Councilmember said, and we'll be able to serve 100 more students. And 100 may not seem like a lot, but it's a lot to us because we also serve the families. And we make a commitment to the families for 10 years, from third grade all the way through high school. And our goal is that they become the ripple effect of change in our communities, your communities, their families, and our world. And so once they go out and they graduate college and, and they go on to be great leaders in our world, they oftentimes come back to Santa Ana to create great change in our, in our wonderful city. So I just want to thank the city for all that they've done over the last 34 years. Next year is our 35th anniversary, and I just want to thank you for this recognition.
You know, Dawn is much too modest, because I met one of the families of a child who stood in line overnight just to be considered as an applicant at The Wooden Floor. So it just speaks to the quality work that they do, how, you know, great a place it is for students to want to be there. And I know that you focus in on Santa Ana students, even though you bring in folks from all over the county, but there are slots that are available for Santa Ana students and primarily for Santa Ana students. So we really want to see them continue to grow. We're excited about their expansion at the depot, but we hope that that's just gonna multiply. And, you know, we see them all over town and all over the county. So on behalf of the city council, I'd like to give this certificate of recognition and award this to The Wooden Floor in recognition of your campus expansion and outstanding contributions to the community. Thank you so much for all your hard work, Dawn. Please give your kids a big hug from all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the biggest priorities of this city council is economic development, and I'm real proud to bring up a driving force here in Santa Ana and really the county. You know, we're blessed because of our geographic location and our great freeways. We're blessed to have the Santa Ana Auto Mall. And at the auto mall, we have Casey Hydler, who's in fact the president of the board for the entire Orange County Auto Dealers Association. The association has 10 dealerships in Santa Ana, to which are the nation's largest for their franchise. That would be Crevié BMW and Tom's Trucks with Izuzu. And collectively, they have 1,000 employees. So not only do they have, you know, a lot of economic development, resources they put back into the community, but they have a tremendous number of employees, many of them that live here in our city. In 2016, just to give you a sense, they sold 24,000-plus cars. That's a lot of cars. That's an average of 2,400 per dealership. And collectively, these dealerships here in Santa Ana generated $81 million in tax revenue. And the city share, because we don't always get, you know, the full share of all the taxes, was $7.5 million just for one year. So let's give them a big round of applause for that great number. You know, all the community services and public safety services that we have, you know, is in large part because of the economic generates we have in our city. And then in addition to these economic resources they provide to the city, they as individual leaders are involved on the Board of Directors for groups such as the Salvation Army and our Boys and Girls Club. In addition, collectively, they give numerous charitable donations, about a half a million dollars a year is what they give locally to Little League teams, the United Way, High School Link, and many other community local organizations. So again, we have Casey Hydler, the president of the board. But I also do want to mention the board members, Ben Boffe, Miles Brandon, Jared Hardin, Casey Hydler, who's here, Frank Murphy, Brad Mug, John O., John Sacristan, who's also the executive director and has been doing a fantastic job for about the past 15 years, Dave Simpson and Scott Wade. So on behalf of our mayor and city council, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers. I'm the president of Tom's Truck Center here in Santa Ana, and we've been a proud business partner of Santa Ana since 1949. Looking forward to many more great years with the city. And on behalf of, I'm the president of the Orange County Dealer Association, on behalf of all the Orange County dealers, we appreciate the recognition and thank you. And especially the dealers here in Santa Ana, as Jose said, that we do have some of the largest dealerships in the nation. We have a lot of support from the people here in Santa Ana and, and the business partners in Santa Ana and, and obviously the city staff here and the council. So most importantly, remember, if you're looking to buy a car or truck, buy it in Santa Ana, because, so as I said, that those revenues come back into the city. And I encourage the city and the council to continue to do great things in the city because we're attracting more people into the city to buy cars and trucks here. And once again, that's a great thing, to generate revenue for, for the city to utilize. So thanks again very much. We do appreciate the recognition. Thanks.
Do we have anything to report out of closed session, Madam City Attorney?
Mayor, we do not have any reportable action from our closed sessions.
Okay, let's go on to the consent calendar. And Mayor Protem, for the record, can you list the items you want to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 20B, 25A, 25B, 25D, and 25F. And I'm a no on 25E, which is Bristol.
All right. Any other items by council members? If not, I would entertain a motion on the balance, and then we'll come take these ones.
Mr. Mayor, you do need five affirmative votes on 20A.
E?
No, 20A. So just want to make sure that you have enough people on this dais.
On 20A, so let's hold that until we get somebody back. Okay, let's pull 20A until we get...
No, no, you have five. Just wanted to make sure you had actually five people.
All right, well, you're here, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're good. I didn't, I didn't...
All right. So with that, we have a motion to second. Those in favor, please say aye.
I don't have a second.
Solario, I think, Villegas?
Sure.
We're talking about seconding the balance of the consent calendar.
What about 11A?
11A? Do you want to pull that?
I think you're abstaining on that one, per the notes.
Got it. That's automatic. That's already in the notes, correct?
That's correct.
That's already in there. Thank you. So with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Let's go on, I think it's 20B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is to award site license and lease agreement and appropriation adjustment for bus passenger service at the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center. So if I could have staff just please come up here, I do have some questions. As you know, in the past, we've had some major, you know, issues. And I think Fred, you're, I think you're used to some of those issues that were brought up a couple of years ago as it pertains to the, to the providers of the, of the folks that actually provide this service. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that who we're going with, because in the past it was a very controversial issue. And for those of you who don't recall, and those of you who were not on this council...
Let, let me just excuse myself for a moment. I realize the representative that represents this is Senator Polanco, and I've received contributions from him. So even though he's not the company, I think it's better that I recuse myself.
This is 20B, which is the award site license and lease agreement for the bus passenger service at the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center. And that's why I just wanted to make sure that the mayor, I can't tell you to recuse yourself or not, I'm not an attorney, but just wanted to bring that up. As we talked about this a couple of years ago, and there were some issues that were pending with some of the licensing agreements from the state on and so forth. And so I just wanted to make sure that none of that is actually happening, that we actually have a full process. So can you just share with me, Fred, what process we've taken? I know we're extending some of these agreements and where we're at currently with the current providers.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council.
And that they're all in compliance.
Yes. This, this particular company, it's newer company, so we don't have a really history of their operation, but we have checked with Department of Transportation. We checked to make sure they have all the, all the licenses that are required to operate bus service in, you know, in the city and the state. They do meet all those requirements, and we are watching them and other carriers very carefully. And they're meeting all the requirements at this point, and we are recommending to award the contract to them.
Okay, just, I just want us to be leery as the prior time, we talked about this, there were some political issue, issues as it pertains to the folks that we've used in the past. And there have been allegations and accusations about, you know, this again, and it's surfacing up. And so I just, we just wanted to bring attention to that and making sure that as we continue to move forward, that we do whatever we possibly can to monitor. And I want to thank you for monitoring and going to the state of California, making sure that they do have their licenses, not only through the state, but going, going through the process here, here locally. So with that, I'll move the item forward.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Mayor, you can please come back. So then, next item, as he is coming, is 25A, which is an approved agreement of a comprehensive proposition of 218 fees and charges. proposition of 218 fees and charges and compliance assessment. And so I had the opportunity to discuss this in our, I only see the city manager maybe once a month, I was going to say twice, but I actually only see her just once a month. And so we had an opportunity to have a conversation about this, and I just wanted to make sure, I know it is for six months. Is it possible, you know, is it going to take six months, or can we do that within four months? And so I would just like to make that adjustment to reduce from four to, from six to four.
They've asked for six months because we've added some additional work, which we described in the report. But as they review funds, they will bring recommendations back. So you will not have to wait till the end of six months to begin to receive recommendations as to how we might change should they advise that we still have some 218 issues.
Fantastic. So I appreciate that. And as we ongoing, is it going to be coming to the full council or will it be going to the council committee first? Or is this coming to the entire council?
I...
These recommendations?
Committee first, Robert, or?
It was kind of...
The city council... It... I think in some, it may depend what we find.
Okay.
There may be some legal aspects, which is what Robert is saying, in which case it would come to the full council in closed session. There may be other places where there's budget adjustments that we would bring you as a revised budget or an amendment to the budget. Ultimately, that would need to come to the council for five votes because it would be having to do with the finances of the city. I don't think we had planned to come through a committee. You can certainly refer it there should you choose.
No, on issues like this, I believe it should come to the full council to discuss, and certainly with the city manager and city attorney, as these issues are very sensitive. And I'm certain that it will be coming to closed session, and certainly with the financial matters, we'll be coming out here to address. And so with that, I'll move the item forward.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is 25B, which is a proven agreement lease office space for one-stop center for employment and vocational training services located on Civic Center Drive. And so I just had a quick question on this, and it's nothing major. And so, you know, what we're approving here is $2 million. Is it because they're making tenant improvements? It has our, is our rent increasing? So I guess I just had the questions as it pertains to that. It's for five years. So the $2,700, so it's for a five-year contract lease agreement.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Yes, this actually is an agreement for five years. It's a five-year lease. The annual amount that is specific to the city of Santa Ana is roughly $250,000 per year. Then there's also additional amounts that pertain to the different members or partners that make up the work center.
Who's all housed here besides the work center? Do we have outside partnerships that are also housed here as well?
Correct. County and also SSA.
Okay, great. And those were just my questions, just want to make, to bring some clarification. I, you know, I'm very supportive in the work that we do. I see Deborah back there, and she does amazing work. And so I just wanted to be clear that it was actually five years and what our portion was. And with that, I'll move the item forward.
Thank you. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, 25...
Motion carries. Go ahead.
The next item is 25D, which is a proof agreement to provide annual software maintenance and support for crime mapping. So Chief Valentine, just very quickly, you know, and I've seen Commander Gominski with the, you know, with his phone in regards to the crime mapping. I had a question with this battle of data. Is this live data that you all have here with this crime app?
Here, Tom, just give them that.
With the spatial data, is it live?
Just give him a moment. He's approaching the microphone.
So the information gets posted from our computer-aided dispatch system at midnight every night, give or take.
Okay, so, but is it live at any given, is it live data? Like where you actually have, you know, you input the information and automatically, based on where it occurred, it's just information that just happened? Or is it information that is being put in at a certain period of time, and then it becomes available?
So we do not have any live data that goes in at all. That specifically is for officer safety purposes. But we do take a chunk of data every night, and it posts between 12:00 and 1:00. I'm not sure what the script says now. Between 12:00 and 1:00 a.m., it posts to their server, and then they publish it.
Yeah, and I only asked that because I was looking at the city of Santa Rosa to tie that with, they're using this kind of technology as well to address the homeless issue. And so they created this mapping, and they're using actual live mapping, so based on calls of service from PD and fire, and then calls of actual service from residents, they were able to actually pinpoint where those locations are and give the live real data of where the encampments are and et cetera. And so I just, you know, thought we had that capability, and something that we should just look at. Someone just sent me the information about Santa Rosa and them using this exact same technology.
So if you can send us the information, I'll be more than happy to check into it and see what's possible as far as our data. And, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I also do want to thank the chief and the commander for the great addition of information on the face, on the police department webpage. It's been updated, hadn't been updated in a long time. And then also, they have a new infusion of energy with their Twitter page and their Facebook page, so you could find the Santana Police Department with great information. And I know Mayor Protem Martinez and I still strive for every department to have open data, real time, and not just for police statistics, but our overall finances, what we're doing with parks, planning, et cetera. Other cities have a lot of live data through platforms, including the city of Anaheim that has an outstanding open data platform. And so we're slowly getting there between programs like we're approving now and the other efforts of the city. So I do commend the staff's efforts for that. Thank you.
So with that, we have a motion to second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Everybody's left here. 25F, just very quickly, and I'm really excited, wanting to thank our public works staff as they continue to move forward with their, the Bus Shelter Public Education campaign. And my only question is that are we continuing to utilize the resources from SCAG as it pertains to its Go Human campaign? You know, we've invested about $3 million at SCAG to help local municipalities with education as it pertains to bicycle and pedestrian safety. And so in particular, as we move forward with this campaign, I see that we're focused at Henninger, King Elementary, Washington Elementary School, and Montevista Elementary. And so what is this campaign essentially going to be composed of? It just says a campaign of education, but is it for, you know, of safety as it pertains to walking and biking or motorists on and so forth?
Exactly. These are designed specifically for, you know, areas around the schools, and it would encourage a safe actions in terms of pedestrian and bicyclists going to and from the school. And it's concentrated on that. We are very, very active with all kinds of grants that may come our way relating to safety. As you know, we know the council has instructed us to exhaust any ways that we can raise funds for Vision Zero SAMSA program, and these are all extension of that program. So this one is just publication and kind of safety and...
And just want to make sure if we can leverage our opportunities with SCAG and their Go Human campaign. That marketing material is free and available to the city. I know we've used it on some of the bus shelters that I've seen around here. But again, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. If the information is there, we should definitely utilize it. And then just secondly, how did we come up with the schools, the focus areas of the schools? Is it any particular reason? Like, for example, tomorrow, we have Walk to School Day, and every year is at a different school, and I certainly will be there tomorrow with the school district as they do Walk to School Day. But just why emphasis on these four particular schools?
There are specific requirements for that grant.
Okay.
That specify a certain requirement, and it was data-driven. So we had, you know, gathered data in terms of number of accidents and number of, you know, safety situation relating to school attendees. And then based on that, we submitted our grant application so we can increase our chances of getting these grants.
Great.
That's how they were...
Thank you. Just lastly, you know, I know the school district always, you know, and the school board members always say that we have a lack of communication with one another. This is focused on four of their schools. How can we share this information with the school district and with the school board to making sure that we're sharing the good news and that we're trying to educate and bring awareness so that they're fully aware? It would be greatly, you may be sharing that with the administrators. Sometimes that doesn't get to the elected officials. And so I was told today, they're like, you guys got a lot of school stuff on here, you know, we didn't know about. And so how do we partner up and make sure that we continue that communication? And with that, Mr. Mayor, move the item forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item, is it 50A now, Madam Clerk? Okay, I would entertain a motion on 50A.
We do?
All right, Jeanne Robbins, followed by Lou Noble.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Robbins, and I was born and raised in Santa Ana, as were both my parents, who were lifelong residents of Santa Ana. In fact, my mother and my sister still live in the same family house for 45 years, located on South Sycamore Street, a few houses down from Jose Solario's family residence also. My roots run very deep in this city. I have 12 years of Catholic education under my belt done in this city. Eight years at St. Anne's, four years at Modern Day. In the Catholic religion, we are taught to help the less fortunate. We are taught to help the poor, and we're taught to help the homeless. We are certainly not taught to criminalize them. So therefore, I am also an advocate for the homeless population. I represent Housing as a Human Right OC and the People's Homeless Task Force. I understand that you are upset and angry with the county for their lack of effort in ending homelessness, that you are angry because according to Todd Spitzer, they are hoarding almost $700 million that can be spent to end homelessness, and yet they are doing nothing, that they are eight years into their 10-year plan to end homelessness, and more people are homeless now than ever before. This ordinance that you are proposing tonight can be considered a cruel ordinance, and I sincerely doubt that you are actually cruel people. However, in addition to it being cruel, it is also illegal. The matter under consideration tonight is a direct violation of the United States Constitution. Rather than pit the city against civil rights organizations with lawsuits in which you will not prevail, I would strongly encourage you to join other county cities in pressuring the county to spend the funds to end homelessness. Rather than declaring war on the organizations that seek to assist the poor and the sick, I would encourage you to do everything in your power to support their efforts. Homelessness is a problem that will not be solved by the ordinance that you intend to vote on this evening. If passed, you will be subject, you will subject the city to monetary losses from the lawsuits, and you will drive the homeless individuals into neighborhoods and parks. I would encourage you to look at what occurred in Anaheim after the passing of their anti-camping ordinance in 2013.
Thank you. Your time is up. Could you please conclude?
Tonight, you will be presented with a choice. You can embrace the smoke and mirrors of the ordinance, or you can instead work to implement real strategies to combat and end homelessness.
Thank you, Lou Noble.
Thank you.
Followed by Katie Christie.
Lou Noble, I'm from Anaheim, actually. I came here because I see this ordinance, 50A, which is unconstitutional. Since we're supposed to be under God, a nation under God, I will read a little scripture here in Ecclesiastes 22:29, which, if you have a Bible, I would recommend to read the whole chapter. And it says in the 29, it says, "The people of the land practice extortion and commit robbery. They oppress the poor and needy and mistreat the foreigner, denying them justice. So I will pour my wrath on them and consume them with the fierce anger, bringing down on their own heads." And they have done this declares to sovereign God. This is what the Bible tells us. It has many scriptures there how to treat our homeless people out here and everywhere. There's human rights. And this ordinance, I mean, it not only infringes on their constitutional rights or the Fourth Amendment. And you might not think much about lawsuits because it's not coming out of your pockets, but the tax dollars pockets. If you understand, 2012 Anaheim has been doing the same thing over and over again with no, nothing, it has gotten worse. And it's not going to get better. Even our sergeant, even our police department says, we're not going to get ourselves out of this by law enforcement. Housing is a right, and we should know that by now, that the model is housing first. And I would object to this ordinance here because it's actually not constitutional.
Thank you, Lou. Katie Christie, please.
Not too, I think I had a little more time before you. But this is just a warning that, you know, we don't want any lawsuits, but they're coming if you continue on this route.
And after Katie, Morgan Denges. If Katie's not here, Morgan, why don't you come on down? Followed by Dwight Smith.
My name is Morgan Denges. I'm a resident of Santa Ana, and I am with the Orange County Catholic Worker. I am here today to voice my strong opposition to the proposed ordinance, and I would like to tell you a little bit about my faith and why I consider this ordinance to be a severe moral failure. The folks that are currently living in tents in the Santa Ana Civic Center are among some of the most vulnerable people living in our state. They're there, they are there as a result of multiple systemic failures brought on by a lack of compassion and empathy in our society and our government. The city's response has been atrocious. Every week, multiple days a week, I'm down in the civic center to perform the corporal works of mercy in a desperate attempt to show my love for the human dignity of everyone that this city has abandoned. And every week, I see the effects of a cruel government policy tailored to make their lives as miserable as possible. I see your police officers dispose of the few personal belongings that people have. I see them write citations by the dozen for such absurd infractions as camping and excessive property. I watch as they perpetuate a cycle of criminalization that rotates people from the jail to the street and back again. And now I see that you've decided to double down on this strategy by criminalizing every aspect of their lives. The creativity that went into this list banning every item and behavior that they own and engage in is absolutely perverse. According to the catechism of the Catholic Church, God blesses those who aid, who come to the aid of the poor and rebukes those who turn away from them. When we attend to the needs of those in want, we give them what is theirs, not ours. More than performing works of mercy, we are paying a debt of justice. These works of mercy are what I have dedicated my life to. I do not place my faith in this council. I place my faith in Jesus Christ. I will be down there tomorrow, and I will work twice as hard going forward. The debt of justice is made larger by your actions, and there's nothing you can do to stop me from paying it.
Thank you, Morgan. Dwight Smith, followed by Jordan Holberg.
Hi, my name is Dwight Smith. I've been serving poor people in the Santa Ana Civic Center for over 20 years. We've never asked you for money. We've never asked you for permission. But now, apparently, you've decided to classify our efforts, the efforts with the problem of stray dogs, too many bicycle frames. I really resent that, but it's okay because we didn't ask you if we could serve. We didn't ask you if you could do these things. We only asked our 3,000 volunteers and donors in the Catholic Church if they'd help us do it, and they do. I don't know how many of them will consent to being arrested because we're not... I don't know how many of them will consent to being arrested because we're not going to apply for that permit. We've been serving there for 20 years without a permit, and we have no reason to apply for one now. The last time the city of Santa Ana told us we couldn't shelter our children in our house, our attorneys had to forego three-quarters of a million dollars in legal fees. I don't think they're going to be so generous the second time around. I wish you guys well. Last time, it worked out incredibly well for us. It's not going to work well for you. Thank you.
Jordan, followed by Catherine Sweetser.
Hello, my name is Jordan. I'm a resident of Santa Ana and a Catholic worker as well. I am here tonight to speak out in opposition to the proposed emergency ordinance, Agenda Item 50A. In particular, I am here to address some of the language and the points made by the city in its staff report on this ordinance. If the staff report is to be believed, this ordinance has been drafted to address an array of public safety and public health concerns. However, when those concerns are addressed individually in greater detail, they either fail to stand up to scrutiny or more humane alternatives become eminently apparent. Regarding the public safety concerns, city staff makes a litany of claims regarding the civic center population. However, the only evidence offered in support of these claims of rampant crime is a letter written by the Law Library purporting to detail an increase in hypodermic needles in the area. I find it highly troubling that the city would consider passing an emergency ordinance based on what I can only assume are misconceptions of the homeless community based on an appalling lack of evidence included in the staff reports. One particular measure the county seeks to pursue for the sake of public safety, which I find particularly concerning, is the banning of canopies and umbrellas used to form encampments. There is no evidence that limiting the availability of shelter materials will have any impact on crime. What is more, the entire premise that banning these materials will limit crimes seems to be based on the premise that limiting the privacy afforded to homeless individuals to the maximum extent permitted by the law will discourage crime or make catching perpetrators easier. However, with no other population, does our society consider it permissible to limit the privacy afforded to an entire class's living space without the establishment of some kind of individual suspicion? To the extent that reasonable concerns regarding public safety do exist, our society roundly rejects the concept of collective punishment. Yet this city, yet this city seems intent on inflating a public safety crisis for the sole purpose of depriving an entire class of people of their rights to privacy and basic dignity. This is made more perverse when one considers that homeless people are the victims of crime at greater levels than the general public. By using ineffective methods that will adversely affect homeless people as a class, this city will compound victimization experienced by the homeless on a regular basis. As it pertains to the second basis of justification for this ordinance, public health, I find the concerns listed in the staff report to be unjustified. The city's recent commendable decision to place portable restrooms, a handwashing station, and dumpsters near the Plaza of the Flags places the city on the path toward ameliorating many of the health concerns listed in the staff report. I would urge this council to give this previous judicious decision time to yield dividends for public health and the Plaza of the Flags before considering more extreme measures. Thank you. I guess I ran out of time.
Thank you, Catherine. Followed by Brooke Weitzman.
Good evening. I'm here with my colleagues and friends today to oppose this ordinance, this proposed ordinance. I'm going to talk about just one of the provisions at this time, and that's the enclosed structure provision. First of all, I'm a lawyer representing people in the Plaza of the Flags. And although I am a lawyer, I don't think that this provision is easily open to interpretation by anyone. This is a vague provision. Police officers are not going to know how to enforce, and people are not going to know how to comply with. There's shade, it's prohibiting shade structures, which are something very necessary for people's survival on the Plaza of the Flags. If you've spent any significant time on the Plaza of the Flags, you know there is no shade out there. The police officers encourage people to go there from other areas of the city. They give tickets to people who are camping in other areas. They force them into this plaza where there's no shade. It is incredibly hot. There's a lot of sun. People are really risking their lives being out there. And I have a client who in fact had to call the paramedics because he didn't have shade in this, in this area. And by passing this ordinance, you're criminalizing a behavior that people need to survive. They need to, they need to have structures. I also want to talk to you about people who have specific needs for privacy in this, in the plaza. There are people there who are veterans, who have PTSD. There are people there who are sexual assault survivors, people who can't be around people at all times. And to criminalize this behavior means that we're going to have officers tearing down their structures, tearing down their tarps. It means that they could be walking in on these women while they're changing. This isn't protecting these women from further assault. In fact, this is re-traumatizing these women by encouraging what little privacy they have should be taken from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Followed by Dave Oakley. And after that, Andrew Lowe, I believe it is. Go ahead, please, Brooke, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Brooke Weitzman. I'm an attorney at the Elder Law and Disability Rights Center, a member of OC Home, a coalition of attorneys, legal service providers, and other organizations that help homeless folks in Orange County. Our office is located in Santa Ana. We work with the people in this city every day. You have and you'll continue to hear from people here tonight about the serious constitutional violations that are enclosed in this ordinance proposed as written. You're aware of how it would violate a number of court decisions. I'm sure you've heard of them all before. Jones, Mitchell, Shula, right here in Orange County, Levan. So I'm going to focus on a couple of other things. I'm going to focus on the, my serious concerns about the procedure that's happening tonight and the choice not to follow the typical procedure of having two readings, the mistakes of fact that are being used as a basis for this proposal, and the severe ADA violations included in it for the disabled folks living out there. There's a procedure in place for a reason. The city council has rules. You do a reading, you do a second reading, you give the public an opportunity to be heard. This was just put out Thursday, I believe I heard, I found out about it on Friday, but there were a few days. It's under the guise of it being an emergency. There's no justification for an emergency here. You made an emergency ordinance back in September, and since then, things have gotten less bad, not more, because there is more shelter available from the county funding. There are significantly less people in the plaza, not more. This is, this is clearly an attempt to kind of slip this by without the opportunity for the public to be heard. The thing about this that makes it worse than the September action is that that was calling for county action and passing a little funding. This is actual criminalization. You are making these things a misdemeanor. People are going to go to jail because of something the public didn't have an opportunity to participate in. In terms of the mistakes of fact, there seems to be an idea that people can eat and sleep in the courtyard. It's been at capacity since shortly after it was open. Many people are not allowed there or are not able to function in that environment because of their disabilities. They run out of food regularly and serve things like cup of soup instead of an adequate meal when there's not enough volunteers serving food there. It seems to have this idea that increased criminalization solves homelessness. You all know that housing solves homelessness, not criminalization. Citizens, it goes on about citizens complaining and leaves out all the citizens who are complaining about the lack of action.
Thank you. If you can conclude, please.
And I just urge the city council to look carefully at all the significant ADA violations.
Thank you. Dave, followed by Andrew Louis, followed by Mohammed Ali.
Good evening. My name is Dave Oakley, and I'm here to speak out against 50A. I'm not going to be as eloquent as any of the other speakers, so forgive me for that. But over the past nine months, I've been happy to help with Morgan, Dwight, and the rest of the Catholic workers, once a week, handing out dinners to the people in the Plaza of the Flags. I've seen the condition they live in, the total despotness of some of these people, and criminalizing them further and making the one source of stability they may have in their lives something that is gone. Making it so that people trying to help when the county won't allocate funds, making those people the enemy, that's not the way to go forward here. What we need is, if we're upset with the county, take it up with the Board of Supervisors. Don't put these people in a more precarious position. And Dwight was saying earlier, he doesn't know how many of those volunteers will be willing to get arrested. This is one right here. Thank you.
And then after Mohammed Ali, James Berthold.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity for being here and thank you for speaking. I don't have anything scripted. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran, having served in Afghanistan. I am an individual that also has PTSD. The reason why I'm here today is I live 200 yards across the street, and every single day, we are being victimized by individuals that are homeless or members of the criminal element that are coming onto our property, destroying our locks, destroying our laundry mats. We have children that are being exposed to individuals using drugs, narcotics, exposing themselves on a daily basis. Every day that our locks are fixed, the next day, they're kicked in. I stand there and I watch that lock being kicked in on a habitual basis by people that are coming either from Civic Center, I don't know where. I'm not blaming the homeless shelter. My older brother is one of the people that have been out there. I'm a person with PTSD. I'm one of those veterans, but I made a choice. That choice was, I sought help. I still go to counseling once a week. I made a decision to get the help that I needed. The individuals that are out here, they made a choice. We're all here because we work and we provide a living for ourselves. I 100% fervently and vehemently support this ordinance because there are those, if they want help, it's available. All the organizations that want to help, there's a time and place for that. You give one person a meal for the day, you fed him for that day. You give him a job, you fed him for a lifetime. I'm respectfully requesting that this ordinance pass, that you provide the Santa Ana Police Department what is needed to give them the authority to channel these people into the services that they need. There are those that will choose not to accept such services, but that's where Officer Hawkins was assigned, that through longevity and the showing that they actually care. People don't care about what you know until they know that you care. I support this ordinance, and I'm also asking and begging if any person here could reach out to myself, I will reach out to yourself at a later time. I believe, Mr. Villia, I guess you're our representative for Ward 5. We are desperate for support, and we are desperate because we have children, we have members, our homes are being broken into. And I can raise my hand and say, within the past 30 days, someone has tried to break into my home while I was physically there. Someone has tried to hop the patio while I was physically there. My home is right on Third Street. And I'm not blaming the shelters, but I am saying, we are doing an amazing job with the resources that we have. However, there are collaborations that can be conducted with the Orange County Rescue Mission, and there are more organizations today that are willing to help the homeless and help veterans than I have ever seen in history. But I know definitively, it's a choice. Those that are putting up encampments, they're making a choice to ostracize themselves from general society, and they're making a choice. So I thank you for your support. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Every single person in this room, including those who support this ordinance, have potentially violated the proposed ordinance. Every single person in this room has placed an item within 70 foot of a building. That's what this ordinance prohibits. That's one of the terms. It is so unconstitutionally vague, so unconstitutionally vague that it violates the 14th Amendment, and it violates case law because it leads to the opportunity of discriminatory enforcement, and it deprives citizens of the right to be able to conform their conduct to the law, such that all of us here, you put down a pen today, you violated this law because you did so within 70 feet of any building, because the ordinance bans placing any item within 70 feet of any building in the civic center. Is a butt an item? Because everybody that put a butt in a seat today has potentially violated this ordinance. It's unconstitutionally vague. It's poorly drafted. It makes no sense. And substantively, it's cruel. It's cruel, and Santa Ana knows this. Santa Ana is facing litigation about its ordinances, and it's doubling down and tripling down on further strengthening these ordinances. The last time that I took this podium, I urged against the emergency declaration, which increased criminalization of homelessness in the civic center, and I warned that there would be lawsuits. I promised that there would be lawsuits. And Brooke Weitzman delivered on the promise that I made a year ago, that violating people's rights will be met with litigation. And so, like every other lawyer in this, in this room, and like every other well-meaning advocate in this room, I urged the city council to not waste taxpayer dollars on ordinances that are clearly unconstitutional as well as cruel.
Thank you. James Berthold, followed by Rebecca Edwards.
Hi, my name is James Berthold. I have been very grateful over the last six months to work with the Isaiah House down in the Civic Center and to serve these people that are so desperate and so needy. And the absolute worst thing that you could do to them is to further criminalize what they do, to drive them into an overcrowded shelter, and to deny volunteers, people who are sacrificing their time and their money to come down and feed these people that desperately need it, to criminalize that as well. And it just baffles me. And I would ask you to reconsider voting on this and not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Rebecca, followed by Justin Samron.
Thank you here for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just want to kind of go back to something that Councilman Somianto said earlier today when referencing the earthquake on September 7th and 9th in Mexico. He said, "We can't lose our humanity and our sensitivity to the people that are affected by this." And I would say, we can't lose our humanity and our sensitivity to the homeless, the members of our community, the residents living here. This is not simply a person or an individual that is doing something out of some goal to injure and hurt others. These are people that are trying to improve their lives, people that have the Civic Center, the plaza as their shelter, as their place of living. If you just start to use the criminalization effects that you have in this specific ordinance, which as we've heard from many people today who have better legal understanding than I do, just how unenforceable or how damaging, cruel that is, you're just harming the members of the community. I think this is going to be more harmful in the long term because it doesn't have the empathy and the understanding of the people living there, as opposed to trying to just protect some people. It doesn't harm, I mean, doesn't help everyone. Therefore, it's really a harmful idea at the long run. I think you're looking for a quick fix. I don't think this is it.
Thank you, Justin, followed by Byron Lopez.
I'm Justin, and he's Byron, so I guess I'll go first.
You got it. Go ahead.
Honorable mayor, honorable council members, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I stand before you today as a proud Californian, as a proud activist for the homeless individuals in Orange County, and as a candidate for the state legislature. And I stand before you because criminalizing the homeless as we speak is not the answer. What we need to do is we need to continue to put pressure on the Orange County Board of Supervisors, hold them responsible for the excuses, for the games that they are playing. And I commend this council for threatening them, threatening to sue the Board of Supervisors. Let's continue to do that together. We will work with you on that. We need to hold the board accountable. Unfortunately, criminalizing the homeless is not the answer. We know, we know that housing-first model is the best way to go forward. I know Santa Ana can be a real leader in this. And I've spoken to many of my constituents who do live in the city of Santa Ana, and they have told me homelessness is a concern of theirs. But what we need to do is we need to advance permanent supportive housing, allowing these people to get the wraparound services that they need. Criminalizing them does nothing but perpetuate this jail-to-street-to-jail pipeline, which benefits no one. And a gentleman mentioned prior that these individuals choose to be homeless for whatever reason. I will tell you that many constituents who I've spoken to say that they're homeless because of an establishment that has left them behind, paying them starvation wages and cutting their hours in order to save quick money. So I, so I tell you, what we need to start focusing on, rather than blaming the homeless, let's work together in making sure that our state legislature, that our Congress raise the minimum wage to a living wage and guarantee a basic level economic security to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. So after Byron Lopez, Debbie McEwen. And Debbie, if you could come closer to the front, you'll be next, and then Dallas Agustine. Please go ahead.
I'll just, my name is Byron. I've been raised here in Santa Ana for the majority of my life. I'm just going to start off right off the bat that this is, that this ordinance is blatant criminalization of homelessness or further criminalization of homelessness. You know, I live here in Santa Ana. I've seen the homeless, I've seen how it's gotten, how the issue is getting more and more pressing every single day. But just because I worry a little bit doesn't mean I have to resort to inhumane practices, to even further policing of this community, to further criminalization of their mere existence here in my city. Now, I understand that for the council, this seems like a quick fix. This is, this seems like a quick fix. You know, you can just deal with this problem, shove it under the rug, and pretend it'll go away, just pretending that by doing this ordinance, the homeless will just leave on their own and go somewhere else. Well, guess what? Every other city is thinking that. You know, just look at Irvine, where they basically just drop off homeless here in Santa Ana, expecting you to flip the bill. Because they- Because they too are also heartless. Every other city is heartless. Because in the end of the day, they would rather serve their capitalist masters, they'd rather serve business interests, and real estate interests, who would rather not see the effects of capitalism every day, than actually deal with the problem and give these people the housing they deserve as a human right. Now, in conclusion, I live here in Santa Ana, I consider myself San Antonio. Now, I will always stand with the homeless before I will ever stand with your capitalist masters. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, followed by Dallas Augustine, followed by Carol Newark.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, this is on a slightly different topic. I wanted to take this moment to congratulate and thank Acting Chief David Valentine on the changes that seem to be occurring at the police department. I have had the need to call PD three or four times in about the last 60 days, and I can tell you that the attitude, the level of service has been exemplary. It is wonderful for those of us at neighborhood level to know that dispatch is no longer a gatekeeper that holds you at bay. They're there to direct you, or help you in your moment of need, be it just some minor neighborhood shenanigans, or something on a much bigger level. But I want to thank you for the change, it is wonderful. Thank you.
Dallas, followed by Carol Newark.
City Council, my name is Dallas Augustine, and in addition to targeting our most vulnerable populations, this ordinance targets the service providers. Explicitly, it targets the Orange County Needle Exchange. The opioid crisis was nationally just declared a national emergency, and our community has been deeply affected. OCNEP aims to combat this crisis by reducing the spread of HIV and Hep C, and by safely disposing of youth syringes, among other additional services. We're all passionate volunteers who serve our community, and despite being volunteers, we're also state-funded and licensed to operate in a location that was chosen by the city of Santa Ana. But despite the health and safety codes that protect and authorize the legal carry of syringes, and both new and properly contained, law enforcement continues to wrongfully cite our clients who are carrying these lawful items. We care about safe needle disposal, and we partner with community members like Mariposa Landscaping and the county to safely dispose of needles, but we can do nothing to prevent the unlawful and wrongful acts of the law enforcement. The staff report that was sent around includes a graph of needles reported in the last year. There were 15 in August, 1-5. That same month, OCNEP safely disposed of 250,000 youth syringes. With the forced closure or relocation of OCNEP, not 1-5, 15 needles would be out in the community, but 250,000. We are here to serve our clients, our community, and all of you. We're interested in public safety and in public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dallas. Carol, followed by Sabal Landrum.
All right, hello, I'm Carol Newark, I also represent the Orange County Needle Exchange Program. As Dallas stated, we are open to working with members of the community and the city to resolve this issue of needle litter. We've been asked by the city and the community to limit the number of needles that we give out, and for the longest time, we resisted doing so, because doing that puts our clients at risk, especially those who are traveling great distances, maybe once a month to come and get needles from us. That puts them at risk for contracting HIV and hepatitis C. However, because we do hear you, and we would like to respond to the community, starting this Saturday, we will be capping the number of needles that we give out to each participant at 200. But please keep in mind that this won't do little to reduce the needle litter until our participants no longer fear wrongful citation, and we have the support that we need to open additional days so that we can have more needle disposal. So rather than pushing out us, as well as other necessary services, let's collaborate to solve this issue. Thank you.
Sally, followed by David Yamasaki.
Hi, my name is Sabal Landrum, and I'm the staff attorney at Orange County Legal Aid Society. We have drafted a letter that the council members should have in front of them as well, addressing Item 50A. I'm here tonight on behalf of one of my clients. My client, on the eve of becoming homeless, a woman alone, came to the civic center with her service dog and emotional support cats. My client is a Section 8 voucher holder, she suffers from physical and mental disabilities. After receiving a 60-day notice to vacate, which is a no-cause notice, my client was unable to find a unit that would accept her voucher and was within the payment standard. And as a person who receives disability payments, she could not afford and would not be approved for anything with higher rent than that. My client's story is a common one, it is not a choice. The emergency ordinance you are considering tonight appears to be a knee-jerk reaction that only addresses symptoms, and does so in a way that disproportionately affects homeless disabled individuals, and does not address the underlying problem of insufficient affordable housing in Santa Ana and the county at large. The courtyard is at capacity, shelters and transitional housing are at capacity, this ordinance targets the homeless who have nowhere else to go. Santa Ana now attempts to join a game of hot potato, passing the problem of homelessness to a different neighborhood, or a different city, or a different county. This ordinance would deprive the homeless disabled individuals of emotional support animals at a time in their lives where they have no one or nothing else to rely on. This ordinance would deprive them of needed shade, even umbrellas, and this ordinance would criminalize homeless in violation of the 4th, 8th, and 14th Amendments. This ordinance deprives homeless individuals of basic necessities, and this ordinance restricts access to services that can actually help the homeless, possibly immediately needed medical treatment or services, or services that can help those that are homeless find housing, making it even more difficult for those who are homeless to pull themselves out of homelessness. Given that the council's staff report relies on conditions that are not new, we urge the city to take a step back and rethink this ordinance. We urge Santa Ana to focus on policies that address the underlying issues that cause homelessness, and provide shelter that meets the needs who are homeless, and that are appropriate housing solutions. Instead, this ordinance as written is riddled with problematic language that if implemented, would lead to some absurd realities, and would also violate the constitutional and human rights of those unfortunate enough to be without a home. We urge the council members to vote no on this ordinance.
Thank you. David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm David Yamasaki, I'm the executive officer for the Orange County Superior Court. I address you this evening to convey the court's concerns generated by the homeless encampment in our civic center. We at the court are acutely aware of the challenges and hazards faced by members of the public, the professionals in our legal community, and the members of our court family that enter and leave the Central Justice Center every day. Earlier this year, I detailed in a letter to city officials, which is referenced in your materials, of the many hazards created by the growing population that reside outside our doors. I'm simply here to reaffirm the concerns expressed in my earlier letter, and of those expressed by my predecessor, Mr. Alan Carlson. Thank you.
Thank you, David, thanks for being here tonight. Margaret Sharp, followed by Kimberly Sandovak. Go ahead, sorry about that, Sandoval. So I assume that Margaret is not here.
She is. Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Vincent, Michelle, it's very nice seeing you again.
And you are?
Margaret Sharp.
Thank you.
And Mr. Salario, who just stepped out, I'm really appreciative of his work. I don't think you guys are, this was your idea, but, and it really surprises me for the city of Santa Ana that this came up. I'm really happy that for the city of Santa Ana, the work that you're doing for affordable housing, that you've put the city ordinance, which is something that most cities, I think there's 34 cities in the county, and as far as, I know that maybe it's just Santa Ana and Irvine are the only cities that are trying to work for affordable housing, and I do appreciate the work that you're doing on that so far. I understand the issues that gentlemen over here has, in terms of with the crime, and that is a problem. But I don't think that this is the solution. I think that it's really important to have permanent supportive housing, I think we need to have shelters, you know, there needs to be shelters and transitional housing, and then permanent supportive housing, there needs to be that whole continuum. But I think also too, you can't just have like a one-size-fits-all shelter. You can't, I've seen some of the Christian groups that come out, and there's nothing wrong with that, but sometimes people, some of the homeless people don't, it doesn't fit them. Or some of the people are vets that still want to have a beer or two, you know, they serve their country, and they want to be able to drink, you know, a beer if they want one. And then there's people that do drugs, so you can't put them all in the same thing, because it's not going to work. You try to force them all in there, and then it's not going to work. So maybe we customize. You know, we have some people that, shelters for families, you know, shelters for people just, you know, whatever, and have them all sort of the same group people, and watch over them. And then, but you started off, some people, they just, they're not, you know, and the people that are doing drugs, or that are doing alcohol, I think we need to give them some support. Because they've been through, the homeless people out there, they have been through, I'm pretty sure, hell. And they could really use some support, and, you know, some hugs and a safe place to stay. And they might be able to get out of that, if they had that support. So--
Thank you, your time is up, thank you. Megan, Kimberly, and then Megan.
A lot of you know me, I'm Kimberly Sandoval. I'm one of the people you talk about at Flags. A lot of you know me, I've been out here 15 years. I want you to stop for a minute, and put everything aside, and listen with your heart. I hear everybody talking about us. We've got wonderful people who stand behind us. But you guys never stop once and ask us what we want. I see each one of you walk to work and go to your car every day. Couple of you have said hi to me, a couple of you walk by like I don't exist. I do exist, we do exist, we are people. We've never asked one of you for anything. We are self-supportive. Yes, we need help with food, we can't afford it. If it wasn't for the medical and the shade, my tent, I wouldn't be standing here today because I have a stroke right outside your door. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. You want to take away every bit of dignity that we have. We're somebody's mother, somebody's father, sister, brother, mom, dad, grandma. And we're angry that you want to take away our own dignity, as females, having security of being able to sleep at night. I've been through everything a woman can go through out here, and more. I stay at Civic because I'm safe. That's why I'm here. You guys want to take away our animals? A lot of you know my two dogs. They're very well-known here in Civic. They're beautiful dogs. All we ever hear is empty promises from everybody. But you want to take away the one thing that's there, and that's our animals. They're there when nobody else is. When you're home in bed, safe with us. Not Santa Ana PD, not the sheriffs, nobody. Don't take our animals, please.
Thank you, Kimberly.
You take away somebody's purpose, you take away their hope.
Yes, my name is Megan Doherty, and I am a resident of Orange County, and I wanted to start off with a question for the council and for everyone here. When you imagine your community in an ideal sense, what does it look like? Would you rather see a community full of distrust and destruction, or a community of compassion and collaboration? I believe that by passing this ordinance, you would hurt many people in this community, that could be assets to this community, and many people in this community in need of the services that you claim to provide. You will continue the distrust that these people have of social institutions and of our government. I urge you to give these marginalized groups of people a reason to trust their neighbors, and to trust their local government. I was touched to hear that the city of Santa Ana is standing in unity with those suffering in Mexico and other places around the globe. So tonight, let's stand with those suffering right outside these doors. Thank you.
Mike Lopez, followed by Samantha Nazar.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Mike Lopez, and I'm here on behalf of the city of San Ana Chapter, SCIU 721, 800 member employees. I'm here to urge you to vote yes to adopt the emergency ordinance before you this evening. In short, the current conditions in the civic center are unsafe, unhealthy, and therefore they're unacceptable. I am aware that several people have been seriously harmed by the current health and safety conditions in the civic center. A failure to act will lead to potential catastrophic consequences to even more people. This ordinance is about safety for all. Supporting this ordinance simply does the right thing. Whether you live, work, or visit the civic center, this ordinance balances the importance of being sensitive to people's human dignity, while also paying respect for everyone's health and safety. To be clear, this is not a final solution, however, we are confident it is a major step in the right direction. Vote yes to approve this ordinance. And for the people in the audience, I'm a 31-year member of the city of Santa Ana, and I've worked in and around the civic center my entire career. I'm very aware of the conditions here, and we're very compassionate, very sympathetic. We just want a balanced approach. We do need a solution from our elected officials, a long-term solution that helps everybody, the homeless, the workers, the electeds, everybody in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Samantha, followed by Jackie Cordova. Is Samantha here? If not, Jackie Cordova, followed by Perla Dionisio.
Hello, I'm Jackie Cordova, resident of Santa Ana. I'm just here to remind you that our policies still favor eradication and incarceration of human beings. We've been asking you guys to adjust your budgets for healing, compassion, not incarceration. So we're just here to remind you again who you're serving, we're giving our tax dollars as a collective to, the services are available, we're looking for healing, we have people that are looking for jobs in these services also, and so we're looking for just a shift of the budget, out of incarceration into healing and serving our fellow human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Perla, followed by Kenneth Batiste.
Okay, good evening, I don't even know what story to share, but I will share these words, they're the words of an eight-year-old who started a nonprofit organization to service the people at Civic Center all over LA County and all over Orange County, and that quote is, "The reason for being homeless is irrelevant, their need for our compassion isn't." And this is coming by the founder of Share Hope USA, an eight-year-old, who when he was in third grade, saw a homeless person and asked his parents how he could help. Kids, kids are among these people. And I tell you that because three of my students have to be shuttled every single morning from one park. Because that was the only shelter that would take them. They're a family of seven. Instead of criminalizing the people who have absolutely nothing, why don't you criminalize Downtown Inc., or all those gentrification companies that come to you for help? Why don't you make it affordable for my students to live in the city? to live in the city? Five years ago, I filed for divorce. Among other problems, there was domestic violence. Due to my childhood trauma, I knew I didn't want to go back home. Luckily, I do have a job. I decided to put myself through school, raising two kids, one with severe special needs. And the backseat of my van looked very comfortable. So you doing this to our community, to the people that are the most vulnerable, to the people that have absolutely nothing left to give you, it's unfair, and it's cruel, and it's unjust, and it's inhumane. How can you come up here and say you're going to help the people in Mexico? My family, my whole family, my biological side family, they live down there. And I know they need help. But this is something that you can fix right here, right now. So why don't you do something about that?
Kenneth, followed by Heather Stravvia.
First thing, give an honor to God, to the council. I live in Anaheim, and I've been feeding the homeless for some years off of Anaheim and La Palma. I've also come down here and fed at the service center when it was on both sides. Also, from the Big A all the way down to Chapman, all the way down to the River Walk, on the riverbed. So I kind of understand where we got here. In Anaheim, they closed the homeless part where they had the Salvation Army up there, and then they had a whole migration to the flow, to the riverbed. When you closed down the side over here, you had the same migration. Well, what happens? When you do this migration, you go through your neighborhoods. As they go through the neighborhoods, who start to put the pressures on you? Your voters, your people who pay the taxes. Well, also, those taxes are counting. And this problem, it's not just Santa Ana. It's Santa Ana, it's Orange, it's Anaheim, it's Fullerton. And if you don't believe that, ask those Fullerton police that was on trial for dealing with the homeless man. My point of this is, is this right here. With your ordinance, you're criminalizing the homeless when the real crime is on society for letting the homeless become in that situation. Mental health, there's drugs, there's people out there, I see people out there that go ahead and put on their uniform and go to Disneyland from work. There's people working two jobs. This is not going to be a one fix, one all. But if you go ahead and you pass this, then all the other cities should say, we'll do the same thing. And we still have the problem. It doesn't run away. So we have to deal with this, and you have a whole lot of resources. People that's out here that's trying to go ahead and deal with this problem, to deal with people that is less fortunate than us. And that's what, when we go to bed tonight, and we can lock that door, and we can pray to God and thank God that we have that sanctity that we have in our own home, we need to never forget about those that are unfortunate less than us. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, followed by Ramon Campos.
Good evening. My name is Heather Stravvia, and I am here today as a citizen and as a representative of the Orange County Young Democrats to express my concern and alarm regarding the emergency ordinance related to property and services in the Civic Center area for homeless individuals that is being discussed this evening. Orange County is in the midst of a homelessness crisis, a crisis of limited meaningful action from our leadership. There is a shortfall of 2,000 shelter beds across Orange County, and 33 out of the county's 34 cities are enforcing anti-camping ordinances. As a result, thousands of homeless individuals have nowhere to go. It is in this context that the Santa Ana City Council is considering an emergency ordinance that would do nothing to address this crisis, but rather punishes the most vulnerable members of our communities for their mere presence in the city center, as well as those who seek to help them by prohibiting any assistance without express permission. Your staff report highlights makeshift structures and unsanitary conditions. If adequate housing or shelter beds were present, there would be no need for makeshift structures, so the homeless may have some form of shelter. If adequate bathroom and restroom facilities were present, there would be no need for outdoor showers or for individuals to be forced to use unsanitary options. Removing and prohibiting such structures does nothing to address the fundamental fact that the individuals in the city center are homeless. The city of Santa Ana and its residents would rather, would be better served if meaningful action was taken to address the root causes of homelessness, namely that there are residents in the city without homes or access to adequate shelter. Steps should include moving towards a housing-first model, providing key services, and counseling for those who need it, and strengthening, and strengthening needle exchange programs, amongst others. The Orange County Young Democrats call on the Santa Ana City Council to reject the emergency ordinance, which does nothing to solve the homelessness crisis, and to engage with community leaders and partners to identify meaningful solutions and effectively address the homelessness crisis. Thank you.
Ramon Campos, followed by David Carvajal.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ramon. I'm a youth organizer with Roseland, Orange County. I'm here in opposition of the emergency ordinance that is trying to be passed today. This ordinance will criminalize anyone homeless. Santana is a city where the majority of its population rents. The majority of Santaneros are a bad month away from them too being left homeless, from being criminalized from your ordinance. Do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Carvajal. I'm a public health worker and a lifetime resident of the city of Santana. Before I begin my comment, I want to read an excerpt from an article I recently read by City Watch LA. It says, "The term homeless itself connotes a being without a place, an outcast or a vagrant. At the very start, the word homeless denies that these economically displaced persons are a part of our society, our city, or our neighborhood, when in fact, these folks are as native..." When in fact, these folks are as native as anybody else. Some were born and raised here while others came, like so many of us, from other places. In the end, they are our neighbors who just happen to be without shelter. I'm here tonight first and foremost to express my opposition to Agenda Item 50A, that essentially criminalizes our homeless siblings and those that attempt to provide much-needed resources. Community members are very aware of the intersections of homelessness and gentrification. And we're also well-aware of the four full-time police officers that were recently hired to enforce the policing of homeless people in downtown. We feel like this ordinance is irresponsible and plain wrong. In the middle of a national housing crisis, the city of Santana should prioritize affordable housing and rent control, not further the punishment of homelessness. We look forward to you folks making a humane decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, I'm wondering if it might not be appropriate, may I have somebody from staff come up and say a few words as to this ordinance? Maybe our city attorney as to what it does, you know, there are allegations about, you know, legality of some of it. I know you've looked at it, if you can address that. And then, maybe there's other questions from council members, but, you know, the woman that got up and spoke about, you know, her dogs and, you know, that relationship and situation. I know many people are very, very, you know, attached and find, you know, comfort and companionship, you know, with animals. So if you could address that as well, please. And if there are any questions after this, let's open it up for discussion. Please go ahead.
Mayor and City Council, I would like to address a few points that have been made this evening. I'd like to assure the City Council that in working collaboratively across many departments here at the city, it was never anyone's intent to create regulations that are aimed at citing homeless people who have a cart, or personal belongings, a bedroll, or even an umbrella. That is not the intent of this ordinance. And individuals who speak to this do not know the intent of the people that worked in that room tirelessly over the last several weeks to address some of the safety concerns that are out there. The city police department, the officials that we spoke to, have all confirmed that people who are sleeping in the Civic Center with a bedroll and personal items will not be cited under the provisions of this ordinance. The people who will be cited under the provisions of this ordinance are those who have chosen to take certain types of shade structures, for example, and create the enclosed areas that have presented health and safety issues as identified by the police department. What we did in crafting this ordinance is that we had each of the departments come forward and identify some of the concerns that they had with some of the things that are happening out here in the Civic Center area. In our discussions, we publicly acknowledged, and also spoke with the attorneys who represent some plaintiffs in an earlier case, that the Orange County has not performed its duty in providing sufficient housing or mental health services. We absolutely accept that proposition, and we are working together as staff to try to identify ways that we can address those issues. In the meantime, we cannot, as responsible staff members, go out there each and every day and see what we saw. We do have some pictures, I don't know if staff can make those available. But what we saw out there, council members, are gasoline canisters sitting next to propane tanks, sitting next to generators where people are smoking. That's what the intent of this ordinance is about. And we think that we would want everyone to... Excuse me, may I have the respect of being heard while we sat quietly and respected other speakers? So the intent of this ordinance is to address some of those safety issues. In the middle of our attempts to look at some of the challenges that we had out there on one of our tours, there was a woman from the county who was passing out notices, telling people to make sure that they went in and obtained their hepatitis A shots. What we noticed while we were out there are puddles of water filled with urine and human feces. We immediately responded to that. You will see that there are now toilets out there and hand washing stations. We hope that some of those, we hope that those facilities will address some of these issues. When it comes to the regulations that are proposed, for example, on the animals, it wasn't an easy, it was not an easy choice to present the option to the City Council to adopt regulations concerning the animals. We understand that there are people out there that have these comfort animals, but we had to weigh that against the fact that we saw other large animals who had just given birth to 10 puppies. When approaching the owner of that animal and saying, can we get you services to make sure that that animal does not have more puppies? We were told, the animal wants to have more puppies. And what we found is that we're trying to address those types of issues. If we could find a solution on balance to allow the comfort animal while also dealing with the issues that we have of the many puppies that are out there and the animals that will continue to have other animals, we'd like to work with someone to address those issues. But what we saw in an immediate sense was that we had to address that issue. My understanding is that there are less people in the plaza than there were even, there are more people in the plaza than there were years ago, and that we are just trying to address what we believe are the health and safety issues. We have opened, we have made an open offer to meet with anyone that has any ideas or solutions to work with us on these issues. There are various members of staff that are available from the police department, Public Works, CDA, and to answer any additional questions that you may have, or to answer any questions about the pictures that were included in your staff report.
Thank you, council members. Any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'll start.
Go ahead, Councilmember Yegas.
You want to start, Mayor Protenas?
No, I'm going to go last this round, because I have...
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been working in and out of this downtown Civic Center for over the last 25 years. I've seen the population grow, and it would change. And so when people come here and they talk to me about it, believe me, I've been here a long time, since 1989. And, you know, I have, I've had families, I understand their people. I'm sympathetic. A lot of people come up and they show me pictures of their loved ones, looking for them. Because they know they're out here, they're using, you know, substances that they shouldn't be, you know, drugs or alcohol, what have you. Or, you know, they have a mental health issue. I understand. I completely understand. But, you know, this is not about criminalizing the homeless. Are you going to be quiet? Because I've been respectful of all of you, so I expect you to be, give me the same courtesy, please. So with that being said, this place needs attention right now. We can't wait till we're like, what happened in San Diego when we have this problem with the hepatitis. Are we going to wait for that? We have to clean this up. And one of the big things that I notice is that when people out here are talking, you don't mention about the people that don't want help. Because there is that population out there. I've been out there and I've seen the HARP program come out over and over again to help people, and they get them lined up, please, come out there and offer housing. And guess what? At the last minute, they turn it down. You know, when you get housing, when you get housing, when you go to a shelter or anything like that, there's rules. And they don't want to buy by the rules. You can't drink, you can't smoke, you can't do certain things there. I understand there's also the issue of people that have mental health problems that they have to deal with, and they can't be around people. I get it. That's why on the Public Safety Committee, we have asked for more mental health services seven days a week, not just a few days, seven days a week, because mental health doesn't take a day off. Mental illness, excuse me, doesn't take a day off. I get it. I understand that. But this has gone way too far. You don't, I don't even have to see these pictures because I totally understand, I'm the one out there walking when I see all the needles. I'm the one that had children to tell me, hey, look, there's...
Fine, if you could wrap up.
Thank you, sir. So I'm in support, and I'm asking for all of my colleagues to please support this because this is the county seat, we need to clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak? Anybody else, if not Mayor Protem?
Wow. No, I guess there's going to be no comments after me, but I'm certainly, certainly everybody will raise their hand after always, always when I speak. But Mayor, please indulge me, because I actually would like staff to come up. Because I do have some questions. Because last September of 2016, I pushed, and yes, there was a lot of you who are in this audience today, that were not supportive of declaring a public and safety crisis here in the Civic Center. And I too have a lot of concerns, and I do agree that we do need a balanced approach. But where I get frustrated is that there's a lack of coordination, a lack of communication, not only amongst the city, but the county. And later on, I have two Agenda 85A as it pertains to the JPA and the MOU with the county. And so if I can, if I can please have staff, I'm not sure who's going to be able, but just enlighten me, do we, the city of Santa Ana, have a definition of what homelessness is? And do we have any typologies as it pertains to what that homelessness is? In the resolution, I know we talk about homelessness, but we don't define what that is. Can you please define that for me?
Well, if we're talking specifically to the item that's before the City Council and the emergency ordinance, we are not seeking to cite homeless people for the mere fact that they're homeless. We've not defined that. What we have defined are specific items which cannot be possessed by anyone in the Civic Center. So we haven't done that. So the discussion that's before you today is, we did not, the ordinance was not aimed at tackling the homeless problem. It was specifically aimed at tackling the health issues that were out there. And I understand that staff will continue to work on the general homeless issues as they try to find solutions and housing for some of those individuals.
Great, thank you. The second question I have, do we have any operational procedures for the Civic Center as it pertains to what we're discussing here, as it pertains to public and safety in partnership with the county of Orange?
We have a joint authority with the county of Orange, where we make decisions about Civic Center specifically. And we both share in the costs of different enforcement and services that are provided within Civic Center. And then the city staff itself, because of the role that the city plays in cleaning the Civic Center, has its own procedures, procedures both with the park staff and the public works staff as to how certain cleaning and other procedures that they undertake within that area are done in order to protect the... within that area are done in order to protect the rights of the people within the center. And that's been the discussion that council has had because we've been challenged on it, and we have changed some of those procedures as we saw that people were telling us that we could do a better job.
Do we have that in a guidebook or a documentation? And the reason why I ask that, because when we declared, and you guys highlighted here of this nine-point plan that was addressed in last year, September 16, as we declared, and what was needed to get approved, and what it states here is, you know, some of the items and what the status is. As you all know, I'm a big person, I'm a really, a person that's, I believe that we need to make data-driven decisions. And so, you know, we keep on moving forward with these ordinance, and I definitely understand, and I do applaud the city staff for coming together with multiple agencies to put this together. This was not easy. This was not something that this city council put together. It was actually the city staff that put the emergency ordinance together, and I applaud you all for doing that. But one of the frustrations that I have is that sometimes we enter into doing these ordinance without any data-driven information. And so I ask, for example, I will ask this question, is that, you know, I asked in the past, you know, "How many homeless do we actually have in the civic center?" And I actually toured this yesterday with the majority of the staff that was part of this task force because I wanted to see for myself. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to just see pictures. I wanted to go firsthand and walk and see some of the concerns that is actually impacting the courthouse, our residents, and even the homeless population that is there. And so I would just ask...
Hold on half a second. Why don't we start the clock, because she took some time asking from staff, but once it goes red again, let's try to, you know, respect the time. Please, go ahead.
Okay. So they're trying to get those figures, so those figures are not here. And so I would ask for our staff to be able to present that data to us. It's hard to make decisions without knowing all that information, you know? And today, I was doing a lot of research, and I came across Santa Rosa, what Santa Rosa is doing. And they have a data portal and a dashboard of homeless that's identifying all the calls of service from public safety to 311 calls, to calls that council members are making. They're identifying where those hotspots are, where the encampments are. And I know we're just speaking here on the civic center, but we need to know what those figures are. We need to identify what is really happening. What are the calls for service, for fire service? What are the calls for PD? And how do we move forward and address this? And I had this conversation yesterday. Our police department during the day, we have nine to 12 officers out there. We have dedicated officers that are out here dealing with the homeless issue, you know, five days a week, sometimes seven days a week, and I applaud them and what they're doing. But ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, that funding is not coming through the general fund, it's coming through this JPA. And so there's a lot more clarity, and I'll speak more of it because the mayor is cutting us off and not giving us the opportunity to really dive in. But, you know, before I make any decision here, I need this information. I am supportive, I walked through this, but at the end of the day, for us to make a determination, we declared a public and safety crisis last year, and very few improvements, nothing came back to us informing us of what's got done. And maybe it went to the public safety and didn't come to the full council. It went to a committee, but it wasn't, it didn't come to this entire council. And so that's also my frustration, and I don't mean to, you know, wanting to throw the public safety committee under the bus or our city, or our city staff, but I think for us to make well-informed decisions, we need to have this kind of information. And sometimes I don't see it. I have recommendations that I would like to share, but ultimately, as it pertains to, and our city attorney mentioned it, as it pertains to the dogs, I'm in definitely agreement, if we can find some approach to help, but ultimately, when we do have dogs out there that are having puppies, and there's no way to control that, that creates other safety issues. And so we need to figure that out. Certainly, we don't have those solutions, but I do support the officers that are out there and what they're trying to accomplish, but they have very little resources to do what we're kind of really asking of them. And if we don't monitor and we don't have data, it's, we're going to be back here again. And so I'm very, I just don't understand. We were here a year ago declaring a safety and crisis. Here we are again with another ordinance, and, you know, is anything going to come back to us of what progress is being made? You know, this is the first time that I see this.
We actually had that data, and we had it in a presentation for you at your last meeting when we brought the first report on homelessness. And you were favorable to that. We ended up not making it. But we do have that data, and I would love to bring it back. We have very new statistics on homelessness in the county, homelessness in Santa Ana, how many are in shelters, how many not, responses, we have responses of what's happening with police, yes, but even more dramatic with fire, and what's going on with 911 calls and what's happening to our emergency rooms. And we did put that together. Hopefully, it was before you in paper form, but I would very much like to bring that back.
So why wasn't it presented to us the last time?
We ended up discussing the ordinance, and you chose to make a decision without the presentation.
I don't recall, but I would love to see that information because I think that information's important for us.
We would love to bring that back, and we can bring it to the next meeting because...
And why don't you provide it as a memo in the interim and get it to our bay tomorrow?
Absolutely. We'd be glad to do that.
All right. I know Michelle wanted to be last, but maybe if other people want to speak, I don't want to deny him the opportunity. Councilor Sarmiento, did you want to speak, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, you know, I think that staff and those that are supportive have strong intentions and good intentions by this. I don't think there's any malice or any bad faith. But, you know, what makes it difficult is that, you know, we have folks come up and speak and say, you know, "The city's heartless, the city is, you know, callous, they haven't done anything." You know, we've done more than any other community in this county, and that's what's really bothersome. What we should be thinking about is, why isn't Villa Park doing anything? Why isn't Dana Point doing anything? Why isn't Newport Beach doing anything? Why isn't Rancho Santa Margarita? All the other 33 cities. There's very few that do as much as we do. And so I think to be labeled as heartless, to be able, to be listed as cold is not correct. We've tried to do a lot more affordable housing than anybody else has. We have a housing opportunity ordinance. We've tried to adopt the process of housing first and wrap services around that. So I do think that that is not the best way for us to communicate, and I did appreciate what a speaker said, is that we need to speak to one another and we need to collaborate. We need to understand each other. I understand, and I respect the fact that the supervisor from the county courts and the court system came here and spoke before us. As an attorney, I get calls from a lot of my colleagues that go to court and, you know, complain about that. They're not a priority of mine as much as the children and families that go to the library. Those folks really do concern me because I know that they have a tough time going and navigating through and getting to the library. It's the only library in town, and that's another sad statistic that we have, but I want to make sure that they feel welcome and they're safe. One of the things that concerns me about this is that, you know, there's some elements of this ordinance that really have a very weak nexus to the health, safety, and welfare, which is number two, the umbrella and canopy, number 13, the shopping carts, number 18, bike and bike parts, number 19, the recycled material, 20, area rugs and carpets. I don't see the relationship to health and safety and welfare. I just don't see those as being unchallenged, and I see, I could see that in a court case, those could be thrown out, and again, for not having a connection to the intention of the...
Councilmember, I gave Mayor Protem more time. Do you want me to do the same with...
Just real quickly. The only...
All right, go ahead.
The only thing I would say is, in the effort of being thorough, I would just recommend that we take this not as an emergency ordinance, because it's been an emergency for years. And we declared an emergency last September, I believe, and look, we're back here again with another emergency ordinance, and all this does is it pushes it out into the neighborhoods, and we may have some unintended consequences about this. The final thing, and I've said this over and over again, we should be looking at litigating this and filing an action against the county board of supervisors because they're the They're the ones who are the vested agency and get funding from the housing and urban development, and they're the ones who are sitting on millions of dollars, and we should be at that table discussing with them how we can allocate those funds and dedicating them to our residents because our city's been the most burdened with this issue.
Thank you. Councilman Benavides?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, this isn't a black and white issue. It's not an easy issue to be, to try to address, and frankly, it's easier for us, although it isn't easy to, it's difficult to have to wrestle through this and ultimately make a decision, a decision that is not going to be popular one way or the other, but it's even more difficult, I understand, to be a person who doesn't have a home, who doesn't have a place to lay their head at night. With regard, I did want to address that the information I did take home with me, the information that you placed before on the dais last meeting, and you had all of that information that you referenced, and so I do know that you provided it to us and appreciate you resending it so we can all take a look at it again. Ultimately, we all have to come together, and it's got to be something that, with compassion, that's the only way that we're going to be able to address this for people who are in a tough situation. We all have to work together, both cities, government, both city, county, all the surrounding cities as well. It's a regional issue and challenge. The faith community, and I do appreciate particularly those folks who came out and who come out on a regular basis and who, for whom their faith is not something that you just go and sit in and hear on a Sunday morning, but that you live it out, and it's, you open up your home and you're truly living out that spirit of love and of caring. More of us need to do that. That's the only way that we're ultimately going to be able to address. From the city standpoint, I think we have been trying to address things from a compassionate standpoint as well, supporting things like Salvation Army and its expansion, when there was a lot of pushback, you know, in the neighborhood over at Lacey, but we stood and we said, "No, this is the right thing to do. We're going to stand behind Salvation Army." And I know, I know some, years back, there were some challenges around Catholic worker. Ultimately, the work that's being done there with compassion, with love and support of people is the right thing to do. City has other ways, tried to work with, whether it be Mercy House, Illumination Foundation. We have intentionally, to the point where the council members, gone with the housing first model, and we're, I don't know that any other city has approved housing that's specifically designated for individuals who will find themselves homeless. The Orchard, which is currently being worked on over on East First, Aqua Housing, Veterans Village on West First. So these are all projects that are in the works to provide housing, which is what's needed. The challenge is, again, I see that...
Do you want one more time?
If I may, please.
All right, go ahead.
Is that we do have to address some of these issues, these health and safety issues. My daughter comes to the library, she's part of the youth commission, and frankly, it is, as a dad, it's unnerving. And we've had numerous concerns brought both by our staff, who love the city, love serving the community, most of whom don't complain, but every so often, there are certain issues and concerns, whether it's their own safety, just the bodily fluids and other things that are out there. We see what's happening in San Diego, and ultimately, we're caught in a position where we're having to do something about it. And it's, things have gotten so severe to the point that our attempt today is, it needs to be a both-and approach because we can't necessarily say to the rest of the county and to, just in general, Santan is a place where you come, and there are no, it's, there are no regulations, and you can camp, you can tent, and you can, everything that takes place that ultimately leads to an unsafe situation, both folks are homeless and to the broader community. So this is the city's attempt out of having necessity to try to address some of these issues, considering it's not going to be a silver bullet, it's not going to be something that's going to address everything. We have to continue to approach things with compassion. One of the things that I would, my last comment, is at the end of the day, folks, we can't pretend that folks are not homeless, and again, I recognize it needs to be a regional approach, and I do hear what some of my colleagues mentioned, we have to put pressure and take legal actions, very likely we need to do. At the same time, folks need a place to sleep at night. They don't have a place now, and there are some attempts with courtyard and other things, other facilities, but we need to think outside the box. Is there something where we begin to identify and designate with the county? Maybe there's a place that specifically, it's for, a place for where tents are allowed, where folks can come out, and where there can be overnight security? I don't know, but it is something where we do need to look at addressing the real, just human right and needs of folks that are out here. So that's my comment. It's not an easy one, but hopefully we can begin to bring some resolution.
Thank you, Councilor Lorio, and then Tina Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to say I agree with many of the points made by Councilmember Sarmiento. I like his suggestions, and I'm prepared to vote on it tonight as an emergency ordinance, or maybe if putting on a regular schedule also would be okay as well. I think that this city council really does believe in a housing-first model, and there's no other city that is doing as much as this city of Santa Ana is doing. We have literally in the works about 1,500 affordable housing units in the development queue right now, including the three projects mentioned by Councilmember Benavides, The Orchard, Aqua Housing, Veterans Village. Those three new projects that are part of the 1,500 are 202 units, and they're either, you know, and they're permanent, many with wraparound services, the kind of units that I think we all want. And then also, we've been doing this for decades, you know, whether it's my good friend Dwight here, who has the Isaiah House and has been taking care of people for decades, literally. We also have other great places like, you know, the Armory, Wise Place, Regina House, Joseph House, Emmanuel Residence, San Miguel Residence, and the list goes on, and you add those existing units, they're about 600 to 800 units. That's fabulous. You know, what's unfortunate is that other cities aren't doing the same. But also, as I've referenced before, this needs to be a shared responsibility as to how we address it. It needs to be the city, the county, the community, and it needs to start with housing, but we also need services, and we need safety. And I would tell you, and I'm sure many of you have seen the conditions outside along the river, really, it's inhumane to have, you know, folks and children and even animals live in some of those situations. And, you know, we've all have seen or heard of physical and sexual assaults, a lot of drug abuse going on, a lot of crimes. Also, at first, even with the bikes, when at first I thought, "Well, that's pretty cool, you know, someone's fixing bikes and all this other stuff," but then I realized, based off many reports, including from the police department, many of these bikes are stolen from poor children in our community, you know? And that's something that obviously is not good. I would tell you that even after this ordinance...
Yeah, I'm wrapping up.
I would also say that after this ordinance, this isn't it. We have more things to do. I know we always hear about other cities dumping homeless in our city, and they do. And I know our city attorney's been working with the rest of the council and staff on an ordinance to make that illegal. That's what is what we should be criminalizing. And then also, there are many elements of this ordinance that many in the community have said should be citywide, because, you know, whether it be, you know, Santiago Park, whether it be South Main Street, whether it be any residential area, we're seeing many unfortunate situations. And then finally, we need to continue to work with the county. I, before we, you know, start suing the county, I think we need to give them an ask list of the things that they need to do, and that includes things like at the Gray Park, they have 100 acres for institutional use. They've had plans for shelters there. They ought to build a shelter there. They could, they also have warehouses that right now could be opened up and, you know, folks could be placed in there. And then finally, they need to do permanent housing for the homeless. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor Polito. This is a very, very difficult subject matter because the individuals that are homeless are not homeless for the same reasons. There's a variety of different reasons and very complex. Some individuals have just had a rough time making ends meet, and so they need a place to stay while they still try to find a place to work and sustain themselves. Others suffer from mental illness, and when you suffer from mental illness and you have a job and you lose that job, then you also lose the medical benefits that come along with that job, which then you lose the ability to afford proper medication, and therefore you start, individuals start to self-medicate. And so it's not a matter of putting blame on someone, it's not a matter of pointing the finger, because quite frankly, mental illness is a very, very difficult and complex situation. You don't know when it can affect you. It can affect you when you're 50, it can affect you when you're 30, it can affect you when you're 15. you when you're 30, it can affect you when you're 15. What we have tried to do within the city of Santa Ana is we have tried to find a way to help this community. We voted on the needle exchange program, we have voted for affordable housing units and so forth, but we're also charged, we're also, our responsibilities also go with providing a quality of life for all residents in the city of Santa Ana. And so we have a responsibility, and sometimes that responsibility is not the popular one with some groups, and we have to make sure that something gets done. At this moment, I'm a little frustrated that we didn't build that shelter in the industrial zone that we, that is working so well out in Anaheim. Had we built that, the big concern was that people were going to be loitering outside. The fact is, no one gets to loiter outside. They drive you in, you get referred, you're in there, you get treatment, you get help, and they find out your situation, and it's transition. When you need to go to a doctor, they drive you out in these little white vans and they bring you back. Nobody's out there loitering. If I could just have one more minute, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So this is a complex issue. There are issues with this resolution right now that I have problems with, and there are areas that I think we have to re-look at again, but we do have to do something. That we can't get away from. We do have to do something, and we have to do something that is beneficial for the health and welfare of our entire community, homeless and non-homeless individuals. I do have a problem with the grills and the propane tanks and the gasoline that's all down there. I do have a problem with the urine and the feces that is out there as well. I'm on the sanitation district, and I've been on the sanitation district for quite some time, and I know the importance of being able to separate your intake from your outtake, and I know what it does when you don't do that. And so I believe that we have to go back and research this again, talk to different community members to create something that is workable, that can sustain a high quality of life for the residents of Santa Ana, and also meet the needs of our homeless population as far as services and where we need to go. So that's where I'm at right now, Mr. Mayor. I believe that if we move forward, I'm not, I don't want to say I support the ordinance because I'm not 100% yet there with everything in the ordinance, but I think I need to support the ordinance in order to come back for a second reading to make adjustments to what we have.
Thank you. Well, since everybody else has spoken, I need to say a little something here, I believe. Sorry, Michelle, I know you warned us, you warned us about this. Go ahead and start the clock on me, I may request an extension, but maybe not. Just a thought on the animals, and that is that maybe we could consider amendment that would say that if they're spayed or neutered, that then they're okay, because I do think that there's a lot of mental illness out there, and sometimes animals help, they help a lot. And it calms people down, it's a companion, it gives you a different sense of reality, it can be a very, very positive thing, and I could just imagine, you know, and animals are spayed or neutered and that's taken away, I just don't see how that's a, you know, a good resolution to a problem. So I don't know if we could consider that tonight when we adopt this, if we could make that amendment? Please, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to offer some procedural issues for you to consider. The staff proposed this ordinance to you as an emergency ordinance pursuant to the terms of your charter, which would have required a two-thirds vote of the council if you were going to adopt it as an urgency ordinance. You can adopt the first reading of this ordinance as a first reading, also pursuant to the terms of your charter. You can make amendments after the first reading, so long as those amendments are directly related to the original first reading. So the option you have tonight is either to consider it as an emergency, consider it as a first reading with feedback on what you want to see changed or researched, and we can return in two weeks addressing those issues. If those issues are addressed to your satisfaction, you can then have the second reading that can go into effect. That would also give us time to talk to members of the community who have some concerns. So you still have those two options.
I've got more things to say, but I'll extend in a moment, but right now, Councilor Sarmiento, did you have something you wanted?
It was just a question. My understanding of having this on regular, as a regular matter and not as an emergency item, we can't do much during, between first and second reading. In other words, we can't tackle some of the substantive issues. If you're telling us we can, look, I'll defer to your advice, but my understanding is we can only make minor changes, so that's my concern.
Yeah, we can make minor changes that have to do with the substance. So if the change, for example, were about animals, knowing that the first reading had animals, but now you're going to change it to these animals that are spayed or neutered, that would, under your charter, there is a charter amendment that took place in 2006 that says that as long as the, as long as the changes are directly related to the language that was there, you can make the change. Now, if you wanted to introduce entirely new concepts, we'd have to have the first reading all over again.
I like, I like the mayor's suggestion of that amendment to that particular item with respect to animals, because I know what a comfort they are, and as a pet owner, look, I think it's important that we revise that. But can we strike any of these items that I see that, so if, I listed a number of items that I just didn't see the nexus between the health, safety, and welfare, and maybe those are things that we can consider striking once we have a, you know, once our police chief, our code enforcement folks, our people that are going to be working with this community development, working with some of the community to see what is, you know, and I agree with my colleague, Councilman Tina Herro, we have to do something, because there are unsafe, unsanitary conditions that are going to make everybody, put everybody at danger, so that's my concern. I just think we need to refine this a little bit, and, you know, I applaud staff for getting us this far, we just need to tweak it, and we've had other matters like the lunch truck issue that we brought back several times, that we made a much better ordinance after we reviewed it a few times.
Yeah, so it's up the pleasure of the councils to whether you'd want to do it as an emergency, or do the first reading tonight, or send it back altogether with direction.
All right. Can I now get my time extended? As we do this, I'd like to maybe put a limit on the number of animals. One per person, I mean, 10 per person's not, all right, she's saying two. No more than two per person, but, you know, I know it'll be easier in most cases, but nobody needs 10 animals, I mean, it gets out of control. So with that, the other thing I want to mention is, look, 30 years ago, I was out there with a Catholic worker up in LA, Jeff Dietrich, you know, Catherine, you know, lots of problems, not unlike what we're talking about here today. The difference is, I think, it's just growing, and we're not able to address anything, so everybody's getting frustrated. So I agree, we need to do something, take a step forward, but we have to be ready to consider amendments or things that'll adjust things to make them better, but we've got to protect the city, and by the city, I'm talking about everybody, including the residents of this town, that, you know, they might go to a liquor store and there's a nude person inside the store, and, you know, things that are just out of control, because unfortunately, you know, drugs and gangs and a lot of things kind of come together, and it just causes pure chaos, and we can't have pure chaos. We need to be compassionate and helping people, you know, stick within as many rules as we can. And at the same time, I agree, if the county's sitting on $700 million, we can't allow that. You know, if we just put that money into, you know, housing and sprinkle, you know, housing units around the city to help some of the homeless that are out there, you know, working with Mercy House and Larry Haynes and others, and provide some housing, more than we are already, because, I agree, we're doing more than anybody, and it shouldn't be just a Santa Ana problem, this is a regional problem, we're doing our part, but you all as advocates, you got to be in front of other people as well, saying, what are you doing? Because if we don't do that, you know, we're not doing our job, and we're not doing what we need to do to help everybody. So with that, I know Councilmember Villlegas wanted to make a motion, if you-
So where are we, make a motion, and then we come back, and then adjust, is that, if I make a motion, it passes?
Well, are we doing the first reading or the emergency reading?
So one option is for you tonight to make the changes I've heard, which is-
And I would do that along the lines that-
Removal of item 20, which is the area rugs or carpets, there might have been one or two other items that you wanted to see removed.
Right, 213, 18, 19, and 20, and the amendment to the animals.
Okay, we could make those changes. I would like to maybe at least respond or allow staff to respond on some of those items, just so, yes, do you understand?
And that's what my question is going to be, since it's going to be, we're not going to, it sounds like, it sounds like the motion's not going to be an emergency ordinance, it's going to be first reading.
Yeah, let's not strike them, let's just consider them, that's what, that's what my suggestion was.
Right, and to have staff provide some-
Bring us back some, I'd like to, because, look, if they're going to get challenged, we're going to get sued, they're going to be stricken anyways, and the whole ordinance might be gone, so I just want to make sure that these are, these are going to hold up to the challenge.
If you'd like to have these as the first reading, certainly if you came back at a second reading and struck them, you would be able to. If you made changes to them that are minor, they would be permitted under the charter, and we can take that time to meet with those who spoke tonight and see if we can reach resolution on those items.
And we'll look at all of those items, if there's any we believe there is a justification for, we'll bring that forward in two weeks.
And you're going to be speaking with some of the community members as well.
Very good, then I make a motion, move on that.
All right, so that is Councilor Villlegas's motion, what was just described.
So we're, just to be clear, we're changing it, we're shifting it from an emergency item to a regular item where we'll have this as first reading, and we'll come back for a second reading after staff gives us some-
With the items that you mentioned.
I understand, this would be a first reading of the ordinance with direction to staff to identify and to address the issues that the council members spoke to, and also to speak with members of the community who have raised issues about these items.
All right. Councilmember, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, one more point that I want the staff and the attorney to look at, and it was brought up by the public, is the point about items not being allowed within 70 feet, I think we got to put a little bit more definition to what we mean by that, so if that could be part of what you come back with as a clarification.
We'll address that, thank you.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
I also would like to include language that talks about that this, we will get reports every three to six months. I know that, you know, we have a public safety committee, but this is an entire city council issue, it can't just go to public safety, they're making decisions, and the city, the entire city council is not aware, and so I think we need to have progress reports coming to the city council, so that we monitor this ordinance to making sure that we're accomplishing what we're saying we're accomplishing here.
I'm willing to go ahead and accept that, Councilmember, as an amendment to the-
That's fine.
Motion.
Absolutely.
And the report, you're saying it's a formal document that staff repairs and circulates to the council.
The only other thing, you know, as we're speaking of just adjustments, if my colleagues are fine with it, I'd like us to also look at some data that will, that maybe our community development manager can see, how the monies that the county receives from HUD, how that's being expended, and if we can do that research and bring that back to us, so we can see whether or not, how much is being invested in Santa Ana, how much of those monies are coming here, are the needs being met, is there anything? And I, I'll defer to Councilman Solario, maybe, look, maybe because we've been dealing with the county for so long, and it's fallen on just, you know, no action from them, and they fenced off their campus, and we're dealing with that problem as a result of their insensitivity to their issue that they should be addressing. But at the very least, if we get some data on, you know, what they're doing with those monies that they receive from the federal government for these support services for the homeless.
So Madam Clerk, are my second minutes up?
[inaudible]
I'm kidding, it was a joke, but it wasn't just mine, everybody got included, all that. Okay, with that, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So work to be continued, and thank you all for coming down. Kate, our next item, madam.
Yes, exactly. Tell staff that.
65A, Jeff Snow, if you can come down, followed by George Urch.
Should I let them know?
Good evening, Honorable-
Jeff, just speak up real loud, and everybody, if you just keep it down.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself because of the-
All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Polito, Madam Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members. My name is Jeff Snow, and I represent Republic Services, America's preferred recycling and solid waste partner, and I work at our Rainbow Environmental Services Division in Huntington Beach, where we are proud to be the state of California's leader in diversion and recycling for larger cities.
Just hold on, hold on half a second. If you could all keep it down in the back, please. All right, please continue, give them a little more time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe allow them to restart, just-
They did, they restarted, go ahead, start over.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Polito, Madam Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members. My name is Jeff Snow, and I represent Republic Services, America's preferred recycling and solid waste partner. We have a tremendous amount of enthusiasm for the city of Santa Ana and some very creative, and we believe, high-value propositions to share with the city. We look forward to your consideration of a public-private partnership with our firm and our 350 local employees. The only way that this partnership can be considered is if city staff begins the RFP process, which has been supported by this council several times. In light of this, tonight, we encourage council's consideration of option A. Given that, we would not oppose option C with strict conditions that the short-term extension truly serve the needs of the city and the will of the council. There are nine full months remaining on your current contract. Your staff report and consultant recommend 16 months for a comprehensive RFP process, making a seven-month extension, providing an adequate time period. Therefore, we would not oppose option C as long as there is no more than a 12-month extension. And some of the supporting reasons for consideration of a three-year extension, as proposed by staff in the report, I find disingenuous and lacking transparency, especially the reference to complying with AB 341, which was signed into law by Governor Brown in 2011 and became effective July 1, 2012, over five years ago. Delinquent compliance of five years should not be remedied by a reward of an additional
If you could conclude, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a quick germane question.
Go ahead.
For city our size, what do you think an appropriate RFP time period is?
Councilman Solario, we're aligned with the 16-month process, which we think is sufficient time for an adequate selection process, as well as a full, high-quality rollout to provide a seamless transition or a seamless continuation if the current partner is chosen. Given that seven additional months is all that's required, given your current nine months. Thank you, Councilman.
Go ahead, George Urch.
Mr. Mayor, how are you doing this evening? Counsel, staff, George Urch here tonight, representing ware disposal, longtime business here in Santa Ana. The trash contract here in Santa Ana is presently the largest contract this city has with an outside vendor. It's presently a $350 million-plus contract. This contract has only been put out to bid one time in the last half-century, 50 years. Some of the members on this council, all they've known is one contract, as long as they've lived, with one vendor. This contract, last time was put out to bid the one time, 24 years ago. Subsequently, it's had 13 extensions. There's nothing wrong with putting this contract out to bid, you're going to get a better product, you're going to add accountability with the existing vendor and the other companies that bid, you need a better deal for your consumers in town, the business community, it's a win-win for everybody. I don't know what the hesitation is. Like, the last council meeting, this council voted four to one to put this contract out for RFP. I'd like to commend you for that decision, and like to recommend you do the same this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me bring it back to council for thoughts and consideration.
I'll ask some questions, though.
Go ahead.
Staff, so we have three options, so, Mr. Musal, if you can approach. You didn't have the pleasure of being present at the last council meeting, so you missed some of the fireworks, then. Maybe we can do a repeat for you tonight.
Okay.
Just, hopefully we don't go there, actually. Staff presents three options. Just, hopefully we don't go there actually, you, staff presents three options, how far would one of those, or two of those have to do with reviewing and considering what you've already started, I hope, and they're pretty far along in, which is the, the review of negotiations on a contract extension, how far along is that, is that process and how much longer would we have to wait to get that finalized and done?
We have a proposal that we evaluated last week that the staff recommends, we need two more weeks to have that proposal vetted to the legal department, to come up with, you know, the kinks of the agreement, and we have the agreement to be considered by the council in two weeks.
So at this point, staff has, your public works staff has completely reviewed and at this point, it's, it's just a legal review that's, that's needed, is that?
That's correct, the deal points on, the deal points at hand are two years' extension to current contract and one year additional extension at full discretion of the city, so basically it's two years and one, and the reason we consider two years is because that's the best option we could, we could get in terms of the timeline that we need, and consider that we started this process in July of 2015, from July of 2015, there were a number of times that the proposal was about to come to council, it was, it was, for some reason or another, it didn't, so we figured that if we bring the scope in during the process, even though it takes 15 months, if the council want to look at the scope, if they wanted to send us back to review that, every time is going to be two weeks, three weeks, so we feel like 15 months is if we get no feedback from the council, is going to be 24 months, to be, to be honest with you, I mean, that's, that's what we think a proper timeline is going to be, 24 months to get a orderly process in establishing a new, new contract.
So between now and next, and next meeting, if we, if we go with either B or C, which addresses the, the potential for contract extension, in two weeks, all of these, these deal points, everything that you're addressing, we'll get all of the details for that and have had an opportunity, council will have plenty of time to be able to.
That's correct.
Get input from staff, and here's my, so that's one of my questions, and the other has, do we still have, we had, we brought in, sure, sure, we had brought in a independent third party to do some of this analysis, are they still under retainer, have they analyzed and will they be providing some input and be present at the next meeting, can they be?
Yes, they're here too, they can provide input if you like, they, they have worked with, with us and they basically reviewed the hundreds of pages of proposal that was submitted in, and they can provide the comments today or next, next week, so just wanted to make this clear, we're saying that, give us an authorization to, to work on generating this RFP, we are, we're ready, RFP is 90% complete, maybe 95% complete, so we're ready to go with that, and we're saying while we're putting that out, we need that extension because we're not going to finish this process by July of 2018, so the choice is either we have extension beyond July 2018 so we can do this process in an orderly fashion and not create uncertainty and chaos at the end of the day, and we can control the cost, or we say, okay, just do the RFP and we'll see what happens in July, July of next year, maybe we get a good deal, month-to-month extension, maybe not, so we just want to do, get that extension, we can do the transition in orderly fashion.
Why don't we stay there, but let's go to other speakers because they might have questions of you as well.
Yeah.
Sal.
You know, I have, I get concerned with, let's just get an RFP and let's figure out, see what's going to happen, right, because that, that doesn't create certainty with me, one of the things that I do know, yes, I have been here for quite some time, I think, since 2006, but I have been a resident of Santa Ana my entire life, and as a council member, I've never received one complaint from any resident regarding their, their, their waste and, and waste management, so I've never received a complaint, that's huge, whereas I talked, I sit on San Tation District and I talk to other colleagues there from other cities who use other companies, and they tell me, you know, in private, be careful if you ever use this company, be careful if you use that company, because they have a high number of accidents and so forth, what I would like to see is, I would like for us to do it right, so if that means giving an extension to assure that we get a proper RFP in place, you know, then I think we're in, in good shape, so I would be more apt to making sure that, that our residents are getting their waste taken out correctly like they have been for many, many years, in the meantime, if we want to go up for an RFP down the road, then we go up for an RFP and let the chips fall where they may, at the end of the day, I think that the services that we're receiving right now are good services and they will rise to the top.
That's correct.
But in the meantime, I would prefer for us, I don't want to just put an RFP out there, I would prefer us, prefer for us to get the extension and go out for the RFP down the road.
We have specified the timeline to put an RFP out in an orderly fashion to make sure that community is involved, we come back in every step of the way, we check the scope with the council, and we have lined all that up, and that's why we came up with 15 to 24 months to get that done properly, as to emphasize to your point, we, we're getting a great service from waste management, we have been, and we wanted to add a great price right now, and we wanted to make sure that service and that price is locked in while we're going through the RFP process.
Right, because at the end of the day, we are going out for an RFP process.
Yes, without a doubt.
No one's getting locked out, we just need to do it right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other comments, Councilor Solario?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think what I hear staff saying is they need two years to do the RFP to build any additional time above that, that the 16 months, and that that's pretty much what they've agreed to with, with the current contractor, but that really, you need that time to do the RFP, so I think I maybe hear, hearing you say that we really need to do A and B together.
Correct.
And so, I'm, I'm fine with voting then for item C, which is direct staff to proceed with options A and B concurrently, or just the extension by itself, but I, but I'm really hearing that, you know, we need the extension to do the RFP, and so they're kind of almost wanting the same thing.
And if you go with C, I think you end up including both.
Correct.
Yes, that's, that's our recommendation, let's go concurrently, let's put an RFP out and let's just finish this negotiation.
But is that two years or 18 months, or what is that, because?
The timeline is, the timeline is according to our experts, analyzing this process that has happened in different cities, some of them currently say 16 months, 16 months process, but all I'm saying is, this is if we don't get any kind of a comments back from the council during the process, if you want to look at the scope, if you want to.
So there's some uncertainty.
Exactly, I mean, if everything goes well, it's 15, 16 months, according to what our understanding is, but we're giving ourselves some time to be able to kind of complete the project or.
But is it true, the sooner we start, the sooner we finish?
Correct.
Councilor Sarmiento, did you have a?
So I'd like to go ahead and move item C, direct staff to proceed with options A and B, that way we're going to look at that two-year and then, and then an RFP.
I'll second that, that's the motion.
So C?
Yes, correct.
Any thoughts on the motion? Go ahead, Councilor Sarmiento.
I'm, I'm still confused on your timeline, Fred, and, you know, and look, I think you guys have done a really difficult job, you know, and a good, a good job under difficult circumstances, the only thing I'm worried about, and I, you know, I want to agree with my colleague, Councilman Tina Hedo, I don't think this is really a referendum on waste or the services or, you know, complaints, I just think it begs the question when you have a contract that's, that's, that's this large and this complex and this valuable, the residents deserve to have this procured, it's just, the optics are horrible, right, the narrative is horrible for us that we're a community that's had a contract with a single vendor for more than 50 years, and so I just don't think that looks good for the city, it doesn't look good for our directors or our professionals or our residents, so my concern is that, I think waste would probably prevail if they, if they bid, and I think that their brand is not tarnished, their work is, is going to be respected more, but I think they need to compete because that's the proper way to do things, and that's what we've done with everything else, so I would just say, let's go out to procure now, you said we're 90% done with the, with the RFP as it's structured, I don't, 10%, I don't know how much longer that would take, the contract with waste is up in nine months, is that correct? It expires in nine months?
Yes, July 1st, 2018.
So, I, you know, I can't wrap my head around why it takes so long to, to do the process, and maybe Sloan Vasquez, you know, can answer that better, but I just can't understand why, you know, I'm, I sit on the water district and we've had much larger contracts than this, and we've been able to procure in a much shorter time, but, look, if there's something that is complex, so complex about this that our professionals and our consultants can't figure out in the past 50 years, well, you know, look, please explain it to me, like I'm a four-year-old.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento, for the question, my name is Joe Sloan, I'm a principal with Sloan Vasquez McAfee, my partner Enrique Vasquez is here with me this evening, so the, the short answer is, it's really all on you, and the reason that it is, is because the 16-month timeframe that we've set forth there, it's, is it possible to actually compress it to a time that's shorter than that, yes, it is possible, but it's not comfortable, and what we're trying to do is make sure that the type of deliberation that you probably will want to have amongst yourself and in public over a $500 million contract, will probably take longer than just a meeting or two, and what's required at the end of this contract, once we've come to a place where we've gone all the way through the procurement process, where we've allowed contractors the time to do the due diligence to submit a realistic proposal for this, the, probably the third-largest waste contract in the city of California, you, you're going to have to give them two or three months just to do the due diligence to prepare a proposal, then we're going to receive those proposals and they're very intricate, they'll be several hundred pages long in response to a 100-page RFP and a 200-page draft contract, so there's a lot that will go into this and there will be a lot of analysis that's required after we receive the proposals, then there'll be back and forth with you in council meetings regarding what's been offered, you'll want to be part of that decision-making process because you're ultimate deciders, then at the end of that process, after the ink has dried on the contract, it'll take six to nine months for the selected contractor to get all the equipment in place in order to serve the city, and that's, that might even be optimistic right now, and that's because ordering trucks and carts in the current environment, and, and it, I've, I've heard some objection to this, but I can tell you, because we are dealing with it right now in a couple of other cities, there is incredible pressure that's on truck manufacturers, truck body manufacturers, and cart manufacturers as a result of this massive procurement process that's just gone on in the city of Los Angeles, that transition is happening now, so this extension will give time for that LA process to have been digested, and then there'd be manufacturing processes that are freed up to be able to provide and meet the needs of the city of Santa Ana, so, could it be done in 16 months, the short answer is yes, but that's going to really shorten the timeframe for deliberations with you.
You'd be surprised how quickly we can make a decision if it's worth our while, so, you know, look, if, I, I think you understand, you're, I understand what you're saying, but I think that you, what you're talking about is deal points and negotiations and going back and forth, look, if somebody doesn't have the capacity to hit the ground running here in the city, that, those are going to be points against that person in the, in the selection process, so all those things, the proposal that, you know, is submitted by waste, that's going to be discussed during the procurement process as well and during the selection, those questions are going to be vetted and they're, so I do agree with Councilman Tina Hedo, we can go out and, you know, begin the procurement immediately or as soon as the, you know, the, the RFP is completed, and we could also, you know, take a look at the proposal during the pendency of that process.
We are, we're in sync with that, we're, we're not suggesting that the contract shouldn't go out to bid, and we're not suggesting that the RFP process should be delayed, we're just saying that we are recommending the two-year extension because in practicality, we believe it's going to take that long to come to a conclusion, we may be wrong, but if we're wrong, we'll only be wrong by six months, and, and I just don't know what the hurry would be in order to get it done.
And I appreciate that, and my last comment is, is just for the benefit of my colleagues, I would just say, we should make that decision, not, not the consultant, we should say, we need an additional six months because we need to vet this further, and so that can come back to us, we shouldn't, we shouldn't provide that extension at this point, it's premature.
So you're saying that by going with option three, we would be providing that extension already?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of implied, but really, B also says that on October 17th, which is in two weeks, we're going to see what that, whether it's two months, and maybe at that point, we can get more rationale on, should it be, you know, two years or 16 or, you know, or 30 months, I had the same question of our public works on, can we do it quicker, because, you know, I've worked at big institutions too, and we do quick RFPs, but I did remember that on the vehicle purchase, it does take some time, I worked at OCTA and they're literally would take us, we'd have to order buses like three to five years ahead of time, because some of these are, have to be custom-made and we're in a special air basin as well, so there's not just, you know, an auto mall where you can get, you know, dozens of vehicles that are ready to order, so two years probably is, is about right, it's a little bit more workroom in addition to the 16 months that was mentioned, but that item will come back on October 17th specifically related to the length of the extension.
So, so we immediately start working, we immediately work to put the RFP out, starting tomorrow, whenever it's going to take, in two weeks, once we get the items in this agreement cleared by legal, to make sure all the assumptions we have are exactly what it is legally, in two weeks, we're going to come back here to council and say, okay, here's the exact deal, do you want to provide an extension, that two-years extension beyond the closing, or you don't want to give us an extension, wait until the contract expires in July 1st and see what happens?
And I think we need to provide the, an extension, I, I'm hearing, what, what I'm hearing everyone hears, or most people say is, 16-month extension is kind of what we're, everyone is saying that they can, it's, is palatable, what staff is saying that we need to give them that cushion in case that it goes over, and so that's, that's where, that's kind of where I'm at, and that's why.
Right, right, and so that's why, in two weeks, we'll revisit that, I'll also say that I, I've told staff this and waste management, I think on the residential side, you're right, council member, Tina Hedo, people generally are satisfied with the service, the rates, but on the commercial side, we're not doing enough, and we ought to ask commercial businesses in Santa Ana as well as residents, what changes they might, they might like to see, and we haven't talked about that, we're just talking about rolling out a document without asking for, for feedback from, from our residents and our businesses.
So by going with option three, which is your motion, we would give the extension and also go out for the RFP?
But it comes back.
The item regarding the extension will come back in two weeks, and so we'll look just specifically at that agreement.
It'll be back in two weeks.
And one thing I, I need to mention, it wasn't our choice to get month-to-month or one year, we wanted to lock the price.
Right.
We want to keep the services, and that's the best deal we could get.
That's my.
From, from waste management, otherwise we would have said, okay, seven months, and then after that, month-to-month, lock everything up, that's the best we could get this, we can lock the price, we can keep the scope, but you got to give us a two-year extension, that's, that's where it is.
All right, so I think we've had a lot of discussion, there's a motion to second, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, I've been patient, I appreciate it, so, you know, I think, you know, I got a little passionate, and particularly in this issue, because I've been on this issue for over six years, I actually got appointed to the Orange County Waste Management Commission because I knew that this contract was going to be expiring, but, and so did staff, and I dedicated my time to learning and going, and so I took a leadership role on this council to be informed and engage, at the same time, I found out issues that we were violating Proposition 218, and that's my concern, is that we are now going into RFP and we don't know what's going to come out with this consultant in this study, it could negatively impact this city, and this is why it's imperative that we go out to RFP, it's not fair that our commercial and our residents are paying It's not fair that our commercial and our residents are paying more. And when Councilwoman Tina Hedo says that, you know, we don't hear residents complaining or businesses complaining, I have no fault against Waste Management. I have a lot of respect. I see Mr. Monaco back there. I have great relationships with a lot of people throughout Waste Man. I don't have an issue with Waste Management. If they prevail, fantastic. Whoever prevails, I don't care who the trash hauler is that prevails. My concern is the standard, is the policies and procedures and the issues that pertain that we may be in violation of Proposition 218. And that is very concerning to me. I know no one likes to hear that, but I have a responsibility. I found out about these issues. These issues need to be addressed. I'm glad that we voted to do an RFP to study this issue, but we've known about this issue. Our Public Works Director has known of this issue. Our City Manager, our prior Public Works Director's known about this issue. I know that it's millions and millions of dollars that may impact our general fund. But ultimately, we have a responsibility to our residents, to the people that are using this service, to go out to bid, to do what's right. And if Waste Management prevails, great, or whoever else prevails, fantastic. But we have to understand that there are other dynamics that is going on with this issue. And then I do have concerns as it pertains to, you know, reuse programs and recycling and how do our commercial, you know, get the best bang for their buck? And I want to make sure that they're supported. When I get emails from a business owner in Orange, has a business here in Santa Ana, tells me that he pays half in Orange compared to what he pays here in Santana, he's kind of telling me like, why do I pay $102 here in Santa Ana and in Orange, I'm paying $80, right? And I was like, wow, let me look into it. But, you know, we have people that are emailing with those concerns and so they're saying, I don't understand what service is different. And so, I just want to make sure that there's transparency, that there's accountability, and that we do make the right decisions on behalf of the people that we represent.
And I believe option three does that. So, we have a motion to second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So, this is time and place for the public hearing on item 75A. Do we have any staff presentation or if staff can just be online? Do we have any written communications?
I have not received any.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on 75A. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration. Do I have a motion on the recommended actions?
Motion.
Second by Benavides. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 75B. Time and place for item 75B. It's a development by Shay Holmes over on Harbor Boulevard. Do we have any written communications? Okay, we have staff in case we have any questions or anything. Do we have any speakers? I now open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to address us on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration.
Mayor, move with comment.
A motion with comment. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just this, the proposed project is within Ward 4, being proposed again by Shay Holmes. It's an area that has been a parcel of land that unfortunately, when we lost the cathedral, the Catholic Cathedral to Garden Grove, what had been planned there was a reduced-scale parish, but that left surplus land available for development. This developer has a reputable, you know, history and background. One of the projects right next door to it, that was developed at Armstrong Ranch, and I'm glad that it's being proposed for development here. Forty-two new homes. Thank staff for their work with the developer on putting this together and again, supporting the item.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 85A. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor, you went really fast on 75B.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Do you have thoughts?
You know, I see what we're doing is 42 single-family residential projects. And our five-year housing element, it indicates that we need a lot more generational housing, which is a three, four-bedroom unit. Do we have specifically how many of these 42 units will be three and four bedrooms?
All of them.
All of them? Fantastic. That's great. And that's great news, and so I thank you for paying attention to our five-year housing element and reading it and the demand that is necessary for our community is three and four bedrooms, and so I greatly appreciate that. And that was my only question, Mayor.
All right. So, we already voted. Thank you for that. 85A, it's your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I brought up two issues. One is the JPA that we have here with the county of Orange, you know, and one of the three items I wanted to discuss was the structure of the JPA, the financing, and the operational procedures of the JPA. Currently now, the city, based on my understanding and reading the MOU and talking to staff, that we currently have two members of the city of Santa Ana, currently Mr. Mowet and Alma Flores, who represent the city of Santa Ana on the JPA with the county. Is that a true statement?
We have two seats. I think it's actually the City Manager and Alma Flores. In my absence, though, it is Mr. Marquez.
Oh, great. Thank you. The, just for clarification, I just want to make sure that the structure, Mr. Mowet. The second is, who actually be, with the city of Santa Ana is actually in charge of the JPA on our side of operating the JPA with the county?
So, Parks and Recreation for, throughout my career, has been in charge of the Civic Center budget, managing the Civic Center budget for, since January 1966, when the Joint Powers Agreement was adopted and approved between the city and the county. From that point on, it's been called the Civic Center Authority. And council, for all those years, until you changed it in October 2014, appointed two citizens, the city did, and the county supervisors appointed two citizens, and those four citizens selected the fifth one, and it was a citizen-run Civic Center Authority Board of Directors. And that was until October 21st, 2014, when this council approved the change so that instead of a citizen-run Board of Directors, it was a staff-run Board of Directors. And the decision at that time was approved for the city manager to appoint the two city representatives, and at the time, Mr. Carlos was appointed himself in Alma, and then the county CEO appointed two, and then the four combination city and county would select the fifth, and that fifth is the court representative, Mr. Polombo. And that's been the situation. The way the budget is structured is about $11 million. I think that was your question as well. It's about $11 million, of which 1.3 million comes from the city, 1.3 million comes from the county, close to 2 million, a little over 2 million comes from parking revenue because there's still, the parking structures are still financed.
Dead service.
Yeah, dead service. And there's some monies, so the monies are for operational expenses, for the maintenance of the landscape maintenance, keeping the Civic Center clean and fixing things. That is on the shoulders of Parks and Rec. We oversee the contract, but it's monies from the Joint Powers. And then, a close to $2 million is being used for police security for the Civic Center area and in operations of the parking garages. And that's sort of the total of 11 million.
Correct. Thank you. I have the budget here that I got from the county. You know, the Board of Supervisors actually approves the budget. It comes to them in a template like this that they...
As we do as well. It's a joint...
Yeah. It's never been connected, you know, just part of our full-on budget. And so, the budget is 11 million 39, and, yeah, I, for a long period of time, you know, I didn't realize that, you know, that it was your department, Parks and Recreation, that is managing the JPA. And so, until we had conversations a couple of years ago and Mr. Cavasos, our former city manager, wanted to make a change and he talked to all of us and we brought this issue up, I had mentioned to him, when he did bring this issue up, that I thought that it would be appropriate to have two elected officials, one from the city and one from the county of Orange, due to the high increase of the homeless problem that we were having here and how we needed to make sure that we were able to participate in how this $11 million would be being spent versus having citizens or, you know, city manager's office or CEO from the county, you know, because we are getting a lot of heat as it pertains how we keeping the Civic Center clean, how are we putting safety and lighting and water issues on and so forth. We heard it all here today. And so, I would like to indulge my colleagues and ask to, for us to consider, I certainly don't represent this world, Councilman Viegas does, and consider that Councilman Viegas would be one of those appointees to serve on the JPA, of course, if he's willing to do so. But I just think that it's appropriate during this climate that we're facing down here with the Civic Center, and more importantly, with the county of Orange that essentially has closed their campus down, and all the issues are really now coming to us. And so, when I look at our budget and how much money we're dedicating, and certainly, we had the conversation yesterday, Mr. Mowet, where you indicated that they were willing to approve additional dollars, the $80,000 for...
$100,000, yeah.
For the facilities, for...
The restroom facilities.
Restrooms on and so forth, and that's great, but, you know, there's a lot more impact that's happening on this side, and I think we need to revisit some of this budget here and figure out what more do we need. Certainly, when I talked to law enforcement yesterday, you know, they're saying that they need more resources. And so, I guess my question with B is, what are those resources that are needed? One of the other things that I did notice is that, how can we be supportive of doing solar bellies within regards to the trash because there's tons of trash throughout this area? And so, wanting to figure out how we're able to use some of these funds. And so, I'm going to just end here, Mr. Mayor. One of the issues that really is more concerning for me is, one, how do we have that conversation about the budget? How can we allocate more funds to some of the issues that were addressed today if it pertains to this ordinance so that we have resources to address this issue? And then, number two, changing the structure to allow Councilman Viegas to sit on there and then asking a Board of Supervisor as well to sit on there as we continue to address this complex issue.
Is Councilmember, are you willing to do that?
Absolutely. Happy to. It's my word.
All right. So, let's make that a request and we'll send it over to the...
So, I'd like to direct city staff to come back on that. It'd be greatly appreciated. The second one is just the MOU. Councilmen Solorios keep talking about, you have to go beyond the Civic Center and have a city-wide homeless approach. And so, with that comes costs. With that comes specifically public safety resources. And I think as we know, you know, we're not hiring police officers fast enough, and so we have a dedicated staff in downtown. We have a dedicated staff here in the Civic Center, you know, and you look at this MOU is almost 20 years old. And certainly, the Board of Supervisors recently said that they were going to have more patrol within the riverbed to address these issues. But the question that I would ask, for how long? Is this a sustainable, something sustainable that the sheriffs will be addressing? Or at a certain point, are we going to have to man, you know, our own Santa Ana PD to address the riverbed? And what would be those costs? And so, I think I'm a little concerned because, you know, again, because of the manpower that we have within our police department is very limited, and we need to figure out a way, if we are going to have a city-wide approach, that we get the resources or assistance from the county to help address this issue. And this MOU is quite old and needs to, and I know Chief Valentine has met with some of the cities within the, throughout the riverbed and the deputy sheriffs, but no, beyond what I've heard in the media is that only the deputy sheriffs are having a plan to go out there to make enforcement, but it's not telling how long of a period of time and at what point in time, you know, our residents are demanding, you know, for us to address these issues, whether it's in the riverbed, whether it's in the Alton Park, bike trails, whether it's in our communities on South Main. And again, you know, as I was on Friday as well, touring the downtown, concerns, again, the issues that why we toured downtown was because of homelessness. And so, again, Commander Kaminsky, he comes with his, you know, we have resources, we have...
Excuse me. Let's do another five minutes, but then next red, let's wrap up.
And so, based on this MOU, I would like to see us go back and have a conversation with the county of Orange and to make adjustments to this MOU because it is 20 years old, it's very broad in nature, and for us to continue to provide our own resources to address this issue when, again, the county has full responsibility to address the riverbed, you know, we only have so many limited resources to address all these issues, and we need a true partner. And so, I need to know, I think it's important for us to know what they're dedicating, how many of these officers, how long of a period of time, if they're just coming in here for a short period of time just to come in and make a huge impact and get rid of these folks and move them to different cities, and they come to the city of Santa Ana, and I think that's been one of our concerns. Anaheim is addressing the issue, Fountain Valley, Orange, you know, and here, we're going to be with all this, with this population in our area, and how are we going to be able to manage that with the very limited resources? So, I would just hope that we can have that conversation with them, bring something back to us and figure out, you know, if they're not going to commit the resources, what kind of resources are we going to need to help address these issues? That's the only...
Mr. Mayor, I do want to speak to that second part of this item, and that is that when we initially did that MOU, we didn't have the kind of issues that we do now, so there aren't the enforcement needs. You know, some could say it's entirely something the county should have prevented and dealt with before getting into this situation. So, the way I envision it is, we ought to push for seeking reimbursement for our law enforcement services dealing with this issue. And, you know, obviously with the county, you know, and the sheriff's department pitching in for that reimbursement request, but it could be too, that maybe the flood control, Channel Agency, maybe the Orange County Water District, whoever's properties they are, really have some, ought to have some burden, some responsibility towards us having to go out and help address the enforcement issues there. So, I think, especially since the sheriff's department and the county has called upon our police department to be part of a task force and have these, I think they meet like every couple of weeks, is from what I understand, and the chief, that that's the perfect place to begin this discussion of, hey, here's the MOU. The circumstances then are very different than the circumstances now, and because this is really more of a county issue, county property, other district properties that, you know, we want to be reimbursed and, you know, and be aggressive in having that conversation. Thank you.
All right. So, where do we want to go?
Again, just give direction for our staff to have that, whether it's through that task force, that law enforcement meeting, but I also think that this conversation has to go just beyond. The deputy sheriffs and our police department don't make these decisions for reimbursement. It's actually the city manager, county CEO, and the elected officials, and so the conversation has to be had there and needs to begin sooner rather than later because, you know, we're going to continue to incur more costs. And again, you know, how, you know, I don't know what the numbers are, you know, how much, you know, resources are we actually spending on this specific problem, specifically on the riverbed? And what would those reimbursements look like if we would even contemplate moving in that direction? Because the county could said, yeah, you can request reimbursement, but doesn't mean we're going to pay you.
So, part of it maybe is a report coming back and the other one is direction with recommended actions that would implement this.
Correct, yes.
Okay, any opposition to that? Seeing no opposition, then that's direction that we give. Let me call our attention to the Housing Authority meeting. Our clerk brought to my attention that we don't have it in the regular agenda, so I would now like to go to the Housing Authority meeting, call that to order, and entertain a consent counter, item 1, 2, and 3. If we can do all that in one motion, I would entertain it. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, I'm going to come back to public comment. Michael, come on down, followed by Connie Hamilton. If Connie's still here, if she went home. Then we got Santiago Espinoza. Go ahead, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, the Segalins aren't going to be here today. They're out of town, so there won't be an update on the medical... there won't be an update on the medical abuse of his autistic son at the group home in Santa Ana. I'd like to talk about two things. What did you do with what you knew and the chance of a snowflake in hell to win? And to your credit, Mr. Mayor, you directed your city attorney to look under the hood in the Segalin case. And the response of that is that Elia Segalin has a chance of a snowflake in hell to get his kid back in his home. Furthermore, that case wouldn't be referred to another attorney because they too have a chance of a snowflake in hell to get his son returned to his home. So let's talk about chance of a snowflake in hell. Earlier you mentioned the symbiotic relationship you have with Irvine with the water usage. Irvine City Council just passed an ordinance where they are going to have a veteran cemetery. Not by a unanimous vote, a majority vote. You'd think, you know, a unanimous vote to bury, you know, the vets got to beg to bury their dead. Well, they had a snowflake in hell chance to get a land swap three years after the fact. They have a property in place, it's gone through the SEQA, the BOBEQA, whatever the, you know, the appraisals and all this stuff with the government, the fed, the state. They're moving forward on this property and the city council, the midnight hour proposes a chance of a snowflake in hell to do a land swap with a developer. And as a result of this not stopping with this, you know, not having a chance, they found a better property off the freeway where people going to buy milk or going to, you know, visit their grandma are going to see those crosses of the heroes, not just people going to the veteran cemetery hidden in the great park. And it's worth ten times more, sixty million versus three million.
Thank you, Michael.
The bottom line is-
Ricky Holder, are you here? If Ricky's not here, Santiago Espinoza, come on down, please. And followed by Connie Hamilton. Connie's not here. Linda Nielsen.
Carl would like to speak on behalf of-
Carl, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Sorry, you don't have Connie, you got me, I'm sorry.
You look like Connie, go ahead.
Thank you, I got the blonde hair. Thank you, that's always common. Basically, I just want to announce that on October 11th at the Santa Ana Senior Center, Ward Two's connector council is going to have its Ward Two resources. And we're very fortunate to have Michelle there at the meeting. We're going to be talking about improving pedestrian traffic, public safety, as well as developments in Ward Two and the update on the street car, and also talk about earthquake and emergency preparation. So anyone that's watching us at home and lives in Ward Two, come on down. Good chance to meet your councilperson. Thank you.
Go ahead, Santiago. Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Santiago Espinoza and I speak English and I have to somebody translate.
Quiero que le traduzcan, espérenme un segundito. We have a translator coming down. And I think Santiago was the last speaker. Did I miss anybody? If I didn't miss anybody. No, espérenme un segundito, Santiago, it have been a translator. Okay, empieze a hablar porque ya están tratando. Empiecen, go ahead.
Mi problema es que me dio una infracción porque el septiembre cuatro fue un día de fiesta y la compañía de basura no pasó ese día, so que el siguiente día pasó la lavadora y este empezó a dar infracciones. Y luego este yo le comenté a la persona que me había dado la infracción, que porque me había infraccionado, me dijo, yo no puedo darle infracción a lo de la basura. Entonces aquí tengo pruebas donde el miércoles siete de septiembre, pero seis de septiembre pasó la, le toca pasar a la compañía de recogida de basura y el jueves pasa la lavadora, se juntaron los dos al mismo tiempo. Entonces este el problema es que me dijo la persona que ellos no tenían, no tenía que, no tenía ninguna solución. Entonces este yo creo que es algo injusto porque en ninguna manera el vehículo, los vehículos van a limpiar ahí la área, so que el camión pasó por medio de la calle y dio vuelta en, dio terminó una calle y regresó de mismo y fue este, allí no hay ningún lugar donde la lavadora vaya a limpiar. Entonces yo no sé si la ciudad tenga personal para supervisar esos trabajos o simplemente ellos son los que hacen el trabajo a su manera.
Mi horita dejé que él lo diga, lo que usted dijo en español, en inglés, y luego le vamos a ayudar. Go ahead, sir.
I received a ticket on September fourth. It was, September fourth was a holiday, so there was no trash pickup. So the next day I received a ticket. I asked the man why I received a ticket and he said that they cannot give a ticket to the trash, to the trash company. So on September sixth, I received a ticket, the truck came around. I asked the person, he said he has no answer for me. I think it's not fair because the sweeper can go around and they just went around and I'd like to see if the city can look into this situation or the city can supervise the situation.
And what I want to ask the managers, maybe through Public Works Director or somebody, we could try to figure out what happened out there and maybe you give them some assistance.
We certainly will, Mayor.
Vaya allá a la derecha y se van a poner en contacto con usted y a ver cómo lo podemos ayudar. We'll see how we can help you. Okay, let's go to council comment. Who wants to start? Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, since you're rotating, last time Councilman Solorio started, so we'll go on this side. I just wanted to thank staff and everybody who came out to the Madison Park Walkathon this last Saturday. It was a well-attended event. We had some of our officers on their bikes that made sure that everybody who participated was safe. And it was a great, successful event. It was their fifteenth annual event. So this started off as a small idea and it became larger and larger and now it's, it was a great crowd. I know that Mayor Protem Martinez was there, Councilman Viegas, and I think one of us walked it, all of it. I think Councilman Viegas walked for the both of us, so Michelle and I took a shortcut. I also wanted to thank the folks at Cowgirls Cafe. We recognize them as one of the best restaurants in Ward One. Each one of us got a chance to recognize restaurants in our respective wards and very, very nice folks out there. They serve robust breakfast, so if you go eat there, make sure you have an appetite. They also have a site over on Harbor called Suzie's. It's owned under the same franchise. Finally, I want to say thank you to staff because I went to go deliver some passes for the Taste of Santa Ana to the Santa Ana Senior Center. Unfortunately, I received some news that one of the seniors over there is not doing as well. I think she's maybe in the hospital, so I wanted to send my, you know, thoughts to Francine, you know, who's always been the face of the Santa Ana Senior Center. She always does a lot to help us organize there. But Francine, I hope you get well soon. If you're listening, and please come back to visit us very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Francine is doing better. She had high blood pressure, but she's doing well. I did attend the senior event this weekend and so was Councilman Viegas present. And it's always great to see our seniors engage, but I just wanted to send a special thank you to Tish Leone that's always activating and volunteering her time to put this senior talent show together and reaching out to the community to raise funds to help the seniors. And so it was really special to attend and really see the seniors very happy and dancing and all the stuff that they made. It's just always great to be there. I did really want to talk really quickly on issues that the community is always concerned, is code enforcement. Talk a lot about public safety and cops, but code enforcement too is also very important. We only have like thirteen code enforcement, maybe fourteen. Two of them are supervisors. We have very few of them out there in the field. You know, we're looking at, you know, continuing to make enforcement on the medical marijuana. You know, the Safety Committee just recently had an item to possibly, you know, update our ordinance to bringing manufacturing and distribution and cultivation. And with all of that comes resources, you know, and code enforcement is going to need to up its game and provide more staff. And so we need to be cognizant of that because they do a lot of the work. And more importantly too, we just passed an ordinance as it pertains to our vending and food trucks and they're doing a study. That takes a lot of time and energy and we don't have the appropriate code enforcement staff out there. And so I would just ask my colleagues that as we continue to support public safety, wanting to bring in park rangers, and I definitely agree with that, talk to our interim city manager that maybe we need to bring in security in the interim because we are having issues in the parks. And again, we have very limited resources with our police officers, maybe having a thirty month of day contract with the security firm that we already have to get folks out there to managing our parks. I know I get a lot of emails as it pertains to issues of graffiti and what's happening in our parks with the homeless situation. And so we need to find solutions. But just going back to code enforcement, we need to make that a top priority here to making sure that they're going to be able to fulfill what we're asking them to do and they don't have the resources. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that we do have Walk to School International Day tomorrow, making sure that there will be kids all over Santa Ana, in particular, at particular school walking, that we always keep in mind to drive safe and look out for our kids.
Thank you. Councilor Oreo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, I do want to thank our staff for working with the school district and the building trades. There's going to be a youth job fair at Century High School on Tuesday, October seventeenth, three to five, to help young people sixteen to twenty-five years of age with apprenticeship employment opportunities. And that'll go hand in hand with the community workforce and local hire agreements that we've been doing. So that's fantastic. With Restaurant Week for Ward Three, Lucille's was recognized that they're at Main Place, fantastic place with fantastic view. Encourage people to go there. I totally agree on the code enforcement. I think, you know, as we look at the next year's budget, we ought to see how we might put some resources there. I think through the additional cannabis ordinance that we're working on, that by the way will come back on October seventeenth, staff is recommending that fifty percent go towards law enforcement, including enforcement overall, including code enforcement. So we got to make sure that some of that dedicated goes to code enforcement. And on the park rangers, you know, it's my hope that we do not contract out with private security. I would rather that we, you know, have police service officers, cadets, or other in-house employees because that needs to be a long-term program. And I know the police chief and the city manager are coming up with some ideas on that because it is a priority. And with that, I want to also thank my colleagues for the hard work on the homeless work that we, the ordinances that we worked on today. Thank you.
Councilman Viegas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say the tragedy in Las Vegas, very happy to know that the personnel from the Santa Ana Police Department, Orange County Fire Authority, that were out there attending the concert, they're all back safely. I know they were out there helping. It was a terrible, terrible tragedy that happened and just glad they're all safe. We did have a deputy sheriff who was shot in the torso and a couple other family members that were wounded. I think one of them was hit in the thigh and it shattered their bones, so they have a little bit of a problem. So we wish them a speedy recovery. And our thoughts and prayers go out to all the victims. Now for the local, yes, I did attend the Madison Park Walkathon. It was great, great turnout. It's my pleasure to be there with councilmember Sarmiento and Mayor Protem Martinez. Also, I attended the Taste of Santa Ana. What a great event. This one was really, really great. And also it's my pleasure to recognize El Toro Carnicería for the Restaurant Week, nominated one of the best restaurants in Ward Five. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to hear all the different events that were taking place in Santa Ana over the last couple of weeks. We live in a really cool city. A lot of just neat people, care about the community, create different events, destination, gathering places, and so it's a neat thing. One of those events I had an opportunity to participate in a couple of weeks ago is Love Santa Ana Initiative hosted a serve day out at Santa Anita Park and Community Center. There were a couple hundred volunteers, folks from faith community businesses, neighbors came out. Couple of murals were painted, the whole community center inside and out was also given a facelift. Community garden was started, a number of different things. And it's just a wonderful thing that that area needed that boost. And I just want to appreciate the staff, number of staff who rallied, were part of that, from Parks and Rec staff and from city manager's office. Truly, thank you for your hard work there and for, you know, the staff who just supported the community coming together and serving. I want to thank councilmembers Viegas and Solorio for also being in attendance as well. There's also Resource Fair, several hundred community members came out and were part of that. During Restaurant Week, I had an opportunity to participate and had the privilege of presenting a recognition to Baja Fish Tacos down in South Bristol, really good spot as well. I shared with the owner there, my complaint is that there's always a line out the door, so you have to be patient to get some of their good food there. And another thing, just speaking of good food and a lot of the great places that there are in the city of Santana, my family makes it a point whenever we can to come out to the Farmer's Market in downtown. Just wanted to give them a little plug, Sundays, ten AM to two PM there at Second Street Promenade. Just a great way to enjoy our wonderful weather and great space here in downtown Santana and to support local businesses, local shops. So with that, I want to encourage folks to do that, support local jobs and shop in Santana. And just last comment, Mayor, Councilman Viegas mentioned that the tragedy out in Las Vegas and just want to ask if we would close just in general in honor of those victims of the tragedy out there.
Yeah, I want to close in honor of the victims in Las Vegas, but, you know, unfortunately lately, there's so many victims everywhere. There's victims out in the Caribbean, there's victims in Florida, there's victims still suffering in Texas. You know, the cameras kind of moved to a different place, but life doesn't get better any quicker for those victims. I was on the phone today with a cousin, one of my cousins that lives in Mexico City, and we've, I know we remembered them here tonight, but believe me, there's still a lot of suffering. There are schools where kids can't go to school because they're afraid there are going to be aftershocks and the buildings could still potentially collapse. They're still pulling people out of the rubble many, many days later and they're still finding that they're alive. Some, you know, they've had a lot of torrential rains, it's all in Mexico City. And because of the torrential rains, there's water that's gone in some of the rubble. And they believe that some of the victims actually able to drink a little bit of that water and that kept them alive so that they still have hope of recovering, folks. So all the problems that we have, you know, pale greatly in comparison to what so much of the world is suffering right now. And so I think it is appropriate to close in honor and sending good thoughts and wishes and condolences. And Puerto Rico, I mean, when I mentioned the, you know, the islands, I was thinking about Puerto Rico, but imagine having no electricity. I mean, right now the lights go out in this building, we can't do a whole lot. And imagine you get home and there's no lights there either and there's no lights at work the next day and no water. I mean, it's tremendous suffering going on right now. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, but I'm going to adjourn it, I believe, till four o'clock on Friday so we can continue the discussion about the city manager. So if you could note that for the record, Madam City Clerk, this, today's meeting is adjourned. is adjourned.